The City Commission to Order for June 1st, 2011. If I could have a, ask everybody to, well, before we do that, we're convenient, I'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Mum.
Here.
Commissioner Nacida.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
And Mayor Neely.
Hi, here. Excuse me. Anyway, you all join me in the place. (inaudible) We're going to have the Oregon City Historic Review Program Historic Survey and Update Project, and it's going to be Christine. And somebody else.
Welcome, thank you, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. I have with me this evening Chris Ann Beckner with Painter Preservation, and we're here to present the draft findings of the survey update program. And I wasn't able to make a presentation earlier this year, but just a little recap of what this project was. The historic review board applied for and received a certified local government grant through the State Historic Preservation Office as we are a certified local government. And we used the money to hire Painter Preservation to do two things. One, to do a resurvey of existing landmarks. We have eighty-six landmarks in Oregon City. Those are historic buildings not located in Kenema or McLaughlin Historic Districts, and see since the early eighties when they were all designated, what's happened, what's the existing status. And secondly, the more ambitious is to look at all the buildings that are over fifty years old that we've never inventoried in the city, and that's actually over fifteen hundred. So it's a lot. But then the first rule of, in the question of what do we save, you have to find out what you have. So that was really this ambitious project, and say, what do we have? That's Phase One, which is just finishing up. Phase Two will happen this summer, where we'll look at any property owners that were identified by Painter Preservation as potential for landmarks, to work on doing more research, and later in the fall, with owner consent, potentially designating those properties for the local designation. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Chris Ann Beckner with Painter Preservation. She'll go through her presentation.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about the project and what we found when we got into the field. I'm going to go real quickly through some slides, but please stop me anytime you have any questions, we can go over some things in more detail. So like Christina said, we did the Historic Review Program Historic Survey and Update Project, and I was done, I was working with Diana Painter of Painter Preservation and planning on this project. So the components of the update, as Christina was just explaining, we did an update of the landmarks outside of historic districts. This turned out to be eighty-seven landmark properties that weren't part of other historic districts. We did the citywide reconnaissance survey. This was a much lighter look. We went and visited the, they actually turned out to be seventeen hundred properties built before nineteen sixty-one, so we went and took a look at each of those. We did a historic context statement for a neighborhood that we thought had particularly good integrity, and this was a mid-century neighborhood, Rivercrest. We did a quick review of the Historic Review Program. We wanted to leave Oregon City with some guidelines and some guidance about some things that could be improved in the future. So there are some recommendations at the end of our report, and of course, the report has a lot more detail than this presentation does, if you'd like to take a look at that. So the first thing I wanted to say is that we had a really good time taking a look at your landmarks. Oregon City has some fantastic properties. These are just a few of our favorites. You can see that we saw fantastic farmhouses, craftsmen's, some revival properties, things with Victorian details. There were some really lovely, lovely properties. It was a pleasure to take a look at them. So what we did for this landmarks survey was to take the history that we already knew about these eighty-seven landmarks and put that into the state's database, so eventually someone can take a look at each of these properties online. So we built records for each of those eighty-seven properties in the database. We included all the history that we knew about those properties. We included historic photos, and then we went out and visited each property, took a look at what its style was, how it was clad, what its windows looked like, made an evaluation, and then added that material to the state database. What we found is that we had four properties that were on the National Register of Historic Properties. We had twelve properties we thought were significant, independently, individually significant, even outside of a district. And then we had fifty-nine properties we considered contributing, meaning that they were, they had fairly good integrity, and they would be representative of a district-eligible We did have twelve properties that had really lost some of their integrity over the years, and those were downgraded. We also had four properties that had been demolished, and we found two that had really gained significance over the years, and we upgraded those to individually significant. There was also one property that had been delisted, I think in the last ten years, sort of based on owner consent. Now, for the reconnaissance survey, this is, again, what we were talking about, is the ambitious one. We took a look at seventeen hundred properties, and again, we saw fantastic homes, especially from the mid-century period. We had minimal traditional homes, like the one top left, we had the little World War II era cottages with the wrapped windows. These were sort of the transitional homes that went into the ranches. The early ranches were fairly small, and then you got the long-stretching traditional ranches. We also saw some of the split levels and split-entry homes, really nice examples. I wanted to talk a little bit about how you tackled seventeen hundred properties in the field. This was a challenge for us, but we had such fantastic help, I have to say out loud. Chris Dunlap, the GIS person that works with the city, was such a help to us. He was absolutely fantastic. So the map that you're seeing on the right up there with all those green properties, those are the seventeen hundred properties we took a look at. And the way we tackled them was, this map on the left that Chris drew up, he broke our survey field into twenty-three maps, I think there might have been twenty-four maps, even more, twenty-eight maps, something like that. Anyway, and we, and he blew those up for us and color-coded them based on what properties had to be surveyed in the field. So we were able to take those out with us, make notes on them. They were completely invaluable, and Chris was so responsible, responsive every time we needed his help. I just wanted to say a special thanks to him, and also to Christina, who's been a huge help through this whole project. So for the reconnaissance survey, we were calling it reconnaissance light. We were going to go take a look at each of these properties independently, but we didn't have the time to go into much depth. So what we did was create a record in the database where we had the address, the date the property was built, and then when we went into the field, we looked at the style, we looked at the cladding, and we looked at things like window integrity, whether or not the wood windows were still there, what they'd been replaced with, if they'd been replaced. We made a lot of notes in the state's records, so that you can get an idea of really how we came up with our eligibility for each property. What we found, just in terms of style, we had four percent of these properties were from the Victorian era, so everything before nineteen sixty-one included properties back to nineteen hundred. We had twenty-eight that were in the large category, twenty-eight percent, that were in the large vernacular category. This included vernacular farmhouses that are very significant in Oregon City. It also included small homes that didn't necessarily have a lot of ornamental detail, and others that had been altered, so that they no longer really fit the character-defining features we, we would normally have assumed their style would have had. We had two percent from various period revivals, we had eighteen percent that were from the craftsmen's, and we had forty-four percent from the modern era, which is sort of our biggest group in this case. We looked at a lot of mid-century properties and a lot of World War II era-associated properties. So the minimal traditionals and the World War II era cottages and those ranch properties made up kind of the bulk of what we were looking at. And this is kind of exciting, because cities like Oregon City are just starting to really look at the history and the relevance of these mid-century properties, so it's exciting to be a part of that. And then we also had a few that fell into the other categories. These were rather various revivals and things that you'll see in the data in more detail. What we found, we found ten properties that we thought were independently significant. These were properties that had fantastic integrity, were really good examples of their style. We also found six-hundred-and-fifty-four properties that we think would contribute to a historic district. We found nine-hundred-and-sixty-six properties that were not contributing, and this was generally an integrity issue, and we'll talk about this in a little bit more detail. And then twelve of these properties had also been demolished. So some of the issues that we found in the field, probably one of the most significant was replacement windows. A lot of the wood sash windows had been changed out for vinyl windows or aluminum windows. We saw the same with replacement siding, asbestos shingles, vinyl, aluminum, pressed wood, hardy board, everything that we've come up with in recent years to replace basically horizontal board. Yes?
I want to ask a question.
Of course.
Because this question with the hardy board. Does adding hardy board siding diminish the historic value of a house according to the standards you're?
If that was not the original material, and in cases, you know, it wasn't. So if you had horizontal wood siding, and it's replaced with hardy board, sort of a manufactured material, it does impact the integrity of the house. It isn't by itself enough that we would consider that house's integrity ruined, but with other factors, like replacement windows, or alterations to the porch, or, you know, very large additions, things like that, it definitely does affect the integrity.
Okay, do you have an opinion, I may be, I may be crossing a red line here, but do you have an opinion on the appropriateness of hardy board siding on new construction in a historic district?
Well, on new construction, what we're interested in is what properties have retained from their original materials. So we don't make a judgment really on what you use on new construction. Now, in a historic district, you have guidelines and other ways that you can make that decision, but we really wanted to take a look at whether properties still had the original materials they were built with. I'm not sure that completely answers your question.
That's been a discussion.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Any other questions? Okay. So replacement siding was an issue, and then the, what we were calling inappropriate additions and alterations. There were a number of cases where people had either added ornament from one era to a house of a different era, and you see that occasionally. Sometimes there were very large additions, sometimes it was a carport that had been enclosed and turned into a room. We also saw neglect in some cases that led to the loss of historic fabric, and then in a small number of cases, like we talked about, demolition. So once we finished those two surveys, the landmark survey and the reconnaissance survey on everything pre-nineteen sixty-one, we started looking at our data to see if we had neighborhoods that deserved special attention for having fantastic integrity. What we found is that integrity really varied, you know, kind of all over the city. You would have great integrity in every part of the city, and you'd have very poor integrity in every part of the city. The one exception that we found was Rivercrest, where we thought that so much retained its original look and feel, that we wanted to take a closer look at Rivercrest. So we went back to the history, we found that it was platted first in nineteen forty, and then an addition was added in nineteen forty-six, and that defined the neighborhood up into the sixties. So we knew how it had developed over time. We knew that lots were developed individually, and that we had two development corporations, the Rivercrest Development Corporation in nineteen forty, and then Pioneer Trust in nineteen forty-six. We also knew that the park was really a fantastic element of that neighborhood, things were really oriented towards the park. You had large lots, small lots, and a variety of mid-century styles, so we can really talk about mid-century in Oregon City by looking specifically at Rivercrest. Also, we had some fantastic integrity on some of those properties, so we called it out special. The reason to do a historic context statement, you know, it adds to our knowledge of this era in Oregon City. Cities are just starting to look at their mid-century properties, as we were talking about, so this gives us a little bit of developmental history. And it allows the city to target areas for future surveys. We realized that Rivercrest continued to grow into the sixties and seventies, and those properties are also excellent in many cases. So we identified some places you might want to survey in the future. It also contributes to our knowledge of this particular neighborhood. We now know how it's bound, and also how it developed, and we can make decisions based on how it looks currently. It assists with raising awareness of historic preservation issues. Now we can talk to people about how to preserve those buildings, what makes them special, what makes them original, what things are worth preserving, and it assists with community and neighborhood planning efforts that go forward from here on out. So the last thing that we did in Phase One of this project was to do a regulatory review, and Diana Painter has a lot of experience doing this in a number of cities. So she took a look at your codes, guidelines, et cetera, and she came up with some recommendations, some things she wanted to share with you. She found that your preservation policies were absolutely fantastic. She thought they provided a lot of guidance, and that they were very clear, they were very easy to follow. She took a look at the zoning code, and she thought that regulations should be focused on design review, and there's some more information about that in the report. The same for design guidelines. Secretary of the Interior Standards, which have been adopted by Oregon City, are really sort of the national guideline for preservation, and she thought they could use, they could be even more useful to you, really. And then there was a public education element that we thought was important. Now that we're looking at our mid-century properties, it's a good time to start telling people how to preserve them, and what their important character-defining features are. We also wanted to recommend that you can, that you continue your survey program, both for planning purposes and for historic preservation purposes, so that you know what you've got as more properties hit that fifty-year mark and are potentially historic. You want to be able to identify what things are important about those properties. So we recommend that you continue surveying, and that you focus on your mid-century neighborhoods, so that before those properties become threatened, you find out what you've got. There's also a chance possibly to improve your program on good rehabilitation practices, by letting people know what the rehabilitation possibilities are. And also, there was a recommendation that you consider a preservation plan in the future. And that gives you a real quick update. I know it's real quick. If it brings up any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you. Thank you.
Yes.
Just one question, I guess. What if it's not a house? I'm assuming things like the elevator come up, or, I don't know, are they, those type of structures incorporated in a survey like this as well?
They could have been. In this case, we were looking at residential properties primarily. We did look at a couple of downtown properties, but yes, absolutely, you have some fantastic resources that need further attention, I would think.
How often, I mean, when was, prior to this year, I was looking at houses that are over fifty years old, when was the last survey done? Was it back in the nineteen seventies?
In Oregon City, you had surveys done in the eighties, and then a few in nineteen nineties, generally resurveys. So the project, you know, the program has been ongoing. I think we'd like to see it done, you know, even a little more regularly, and resurvey is really an important element that you guys have figured out, that we'd like to see.
So it's been twenty years, then?
Didn't we just do Kenema resurvey?
We did. So this, I think we've initiald surveys, so I think the Kenema resurvey, downtown has been resurveyed, and McLaughlin has been resurveyed this decade, but the original surveys were done in the seventies and eighties. An early nineties for Park Place? Those were the landmark buildings. For the ones that we looked at between nineteen hundred and nineteen sixty, they'd never been surveyed.
Did you find any houses, I imagine, like in our existing historic neighborhoods like Kenema and McLaughlin, did you find any mid-century houses that wouldn't have been part of an earlier survey?
There's infill all over the city, so we definitely sort of looked at, at everything built between nineteen hundred and nineteen sixty-one, but most of them weren't in historic neighborhoods or historic districts.
The task was to do projects, properties that have never been surveyed. So if you were mid-century in Kenema, you were picked up as part of previous surveys.
Thank you so much. And in the meantime, I just want to mention, we're very proud of our GIS team.
So glad to hear that.
I mean, they do a tremendous job.
They really do. And just briefly, the in Oregon City and State of Oregon, local designation does require owner consent. And so any future discussion about Rivercrest, and even the ten properties that were listed for local designation, that's going to be a conversation with the city, and myself, and those property owners, if any of them want to move forward for designation. And we do have money set aside for this Phase Two, and if we aren't getting any of those local property owners that want to be locally designated, we may be coming back to you later this summer on recommendations for further research on city-owned buildings that we may want to utilize this funding for, so just want to give a heads up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now is the time for citizen comments. Anybody that wishes to bring up any issues, or talk about anything that's not on the agenda at this time, can come forward. We asked you to fill out a card, confine yourself to three, three minutes, if you will, and identify the, whether you live in Oregon City or not. And I can see we have some people. William Gifford. And also Marjorie Hughes, would you please come forward?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I just want to bring to the council's attention and the, and our viewing public that the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association will be the next neighborhood association that the CIC is attempting to reactivate. And we will be having that reactivation meeting a week from tonight. It's next Wednesday night at seven o'clock at the Ainsworth House, which is pretty much in the middle of the, of the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association. And that is the twelfth neighborhood association. So once we get Gaffney Lane in full gear and Tower Vista, we would imagine all of the neighborhood associations would have been reactivated. It's been a lot of work.
That's great. When I first came on the commission is when the neighborhood associations were forming, and I believe the first one was Barclay Hills, the second one was Tower Vista. And so history's repeating itself.
Circle.
That's good.
That's great.
And many, many thanks to Chris Taylor, our neighborhood liaison, for helping us get, get these neighborhoods back together again.
Great, that's wonderful, thank you. Marjorie Hughes?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Marjorie Hughes. I live in Oregon City. I've lived in Oregon City all my life. My grandchildren are fifth-generation Oregon Cityans. The reason I'm here is I have sat in on a number of the Urban Renewal Commission meetings, and listened to the discussion about visioning, and what, what Urban Renewal Commission can do for downtown Oregon City, and North End, South End, whatever of downtown. And I represent and work with a lot of property owners that are on, in the rest of Oregon City, the Hilltop, the rest, the three-quarters of the city that is not downtown. And we are, we are asking for some help with visioning for us, and especially for the property owners that have property along Beaver Creek Road, still waiting for the Beaver Creek Road concept plan, so we can have zoning, so that some development can start up there. And, and so when you get ready, and I, and I understand that the Urban Renewal Commission is visioning for downtown and the Urban Renewal District, but when you get ready and want some input on the rest of Oregon City, I know a number of business owners and property owners who would love to be put into a focus group and talk about what they think they can do for Oregon City, keeping in mind that they're not asking for urban renewal funds, they're not asking for anything other than the city to allow them to develop. So appreciate you would take that into consideration and help us on the top of the hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom Guyle and Kathy Hogan.
Mayor and Commissioners, before I start, as Chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, I have, I respectfully request that you grant me five minutes, thereabouts, to present a very sensitive, significant situation that requires a little background, just to, if you would allow me for this. I've discovered by watching myself that if I talk too fast, you can't understand me, and I look irritated and hyper. So I'm going to try to read this as quickly as I can. Okay. "I believe we are all aware of these past few months' history of broken bylaws," I guess Tom Guyle, "Park Place, misappropriation of funds. I assumed the position of Chair in February to do my part to re-energize this dying association. I reached out to the local PTA, the local Holcomb Church, and the hundred-and-ninety-nine household Oregon City View Manor Clackamas Heights. I called on local businesses. What I thought was a successful outreach instead turned into an election full of irregularities and misrepresentations. Flyers were mailed out, or handed out to an unknown number of residents and non-residents alike, indicating that this same group of four listed on this flyer were supportive of the rivers." This was the very first sentence. "It asked for the people to vote 'no' on all steering committee members. While this in itself was not illegal, the use of our name at the top, Park Place Neighborhood, was representation bordering on the fraudulent use of our association name, looking like it was representing us. When I asked for the ballots to be handed out, unbeknownst to me, ballots were handed down aisles, instead of giving one to each person, allowing some people to vote more than once. The number of ballots handed to my impromptu impartial counters, CIC Vice Chair Larry Hallen and CIC Secretary William Gifford, did not match up to my mid-meeting at eight-thirty count of thirty-one residents. When I stated this publicly, before the results were even announced, only after the election was completed, did Steve Van Heberbeek state that by our bylaws, anyone who has an interest in Park Place could vote. So that meant that if they were there, they had an interest. Actually, the bylaws read, quote, 'anyone who shows cause for interest,' unquote. I repeat that this pronouncement by Steve was only after the election was over and before the announcement of projected winners. Not being a legal person or an elections professional, I had no idea that I could halt any announcement of results. I would have had a revolt on my hands with no way to resolve it. Some in attendance did not vote, believing they had no right to vote in a city-neighborhood election. They have since sent emails complaining that they were not informed that they could vote prior to the election and would still like to. Bylaws have been broken, stretched beyond reasonableness, to support personal agendas. What we are left with is an election that is in question, because many people, many people feel that the very bylaws that are meant to protect all neighborhood associations have in fact been orchestrated to twist the system. The bylaw words of, quote, 'residents and those who own businesses and any others who show cause to be interested,' quote, is in question. What is the definition of show cause? Do people who show up from outside of neighborhoods' borders, and moreover, from outside the city limits, have the right to determine the governing body of a neighborhood? If many of these individuals cannot even vote for Commissioners or our mayor, do they have the right to vote in a neighborhood election? The question here is not whether the bylaw was used as it existed, but moreover, did the individuals who voted in the recent election, quote, 'show cause to have interest,' unquote. And how many times did residents or non-residents get to vote? Those may be the very basic questions on how this election turns. Additionally, at the close of the meeting, while Steve Van Heberbeek kept me occupied at the front of the room reviewing the ballots, the attendance sheets mysteriously conveniently disappeared at the back of the room. I have since received emails from impartial people, even a pastor, saying that the voting was unfair and a revote should be taken. I am here tonight to request not that the city nullify the vote, but to honor our steering committee's right to make a decision in the best interest of our neighborhood. The clear majority of our steering committee, two to one, that's eight out of twelve members, have contacted me to call a timeout and revote at our next general meeting. If this mockery of our neighborhood association is allowed to stand, it tears at the very fibers of what our neighborhood associations are meant to represent. When a handful of people can encourage people to come in to a neighborhood where they don't even live, to throw an election in favor and agenda supporting a development outside our neighborhood boundaries, then I cry foul. It's very Rajneeshi style of voting. After giving eight years of service, half of which has been in the role of Vice Chair, I find myself facing the reality that if the system doesn't work, in spite of my best efforts to make it work, then I can no longer waste my time and energy supporting something that can be so easily manipulated by a handful of cunning individuals. If we cannot find a way through our city process to halt this miscarriage of fair elections, and crafty people are allowed to use our own neighborhood association title to misrepresent us, then I have lost respect for the process and those enabling the takeover. During these past three months, I have had to walk a fine line on the precipice of a cliff on either side. I am not good with tight ropes nor heights. When two sides are so far apart, I find that none of this is good for my health or the health of the neighborhood. I doubt if anyone would. In closing, if this election is allowed to stand, I can predict as fact that once the rivers is no longer an issue, our neighborhood association will go back to the fortified people it had been attracting over these past four years, and you have lost a few people, or at least this one person, who could have made a difference. In the final analysis, I have to tell myself that this was never about me. I did more outreach in my three months as Chair than all of them did in four years. Don't kid yourselves, this was not about our neighborhood, its livability, compatibility, and communications. This was about the rivers, pure and simple. Never once have I provided comment before the Urban Renewal or City Commission about my thoughts about the rivers. No one from this group ever even approached to ask me what my thoughts were. This was an aggressive approach to take down Nancy Walters, the Chair of the Urban Renewal Commission from Park Place Neighborhood, and I just happened to be in the way. Thank you.
I'm going to make a recommendation. You can go through this process, and your steering committee can go ahead and make a decision to rehold the election. You're going to still have a divisive neighborhood when you do that. It doesn't make, and some of the comments that you've made, of course, have been suggested certain people have done things wrong, and those people are going to be antagonistic. I believe Clackamas Community College, sort of by one of the residents here, does facilitate without charge, what is it?
Clackamas County.
Clackamas County?
Mm-hmm.
Has a facilitating agent that could work with the neighborhood association, and my understanding doesn't charge anything.
Yep.
I would suggest, I would suggest that the problem is to get people to focus on the viability of their neighborhood.
Yep.
The rivers should, the rivers is a temporary issue.
Yes.
It's either going to come, or it's not going to come. The viability of the neighborhood is the big issue.
Exactly.
And I would suggest, before you have another election in a month or something, you've got some officers you've elected, you don't like the process that occurs, you've gone through a process, and I, and we're not going to undo it, but to jump right into another July election, I don't think- election, I don't think, I think you're going to be torn apart as much at that time as you are this time. And I would really strongly suggest that you investigate the facility services that the county has to make you realize you live in one neighborhood and what you have in common.
They have a very good mediation service.
I totally agree with you. That was why I was recommending that some of these individuals would still be on our current board right now and on our steering committee, that we take a timeout and look at this. I would be more than happy to have someone impartial come in. Chris Taylor has offered to come in and help with the election. I'm no elections official. If I did the ballots maybe wrong, I'd be glad to ask Sherry Hall how to do it, but I agree with you that it needs some time to, and we just can't rush right into this and make all these changes.
Right. And doing the election right is only part of the issue.
Yep.
I understand. And as I've been saying through all this, it's not about the Rivers, it's about our neighborhood and what's going on, which is why all these years, no one's ever asked the PTA, no one's ever asked the 199 homes there, et cetera. That's what I was trying to do, was make this about our neighborhood. I had no idea. You're going to hear more comments tonight from other people, probably in regards to this, so, on both sides, I'm sure, but thank you for your time. And I'm embarrassed to have to bring this to you because I really was hoping for the best of our neighborhoods. As Chair of the CIC and watching William and all the efforts he and Chris are doing, I want our neighborhoods to work, and this definitely to me is not letting, allowing our neighborhoods to work, it's tearing us apart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Sorry, Kathy?
That before, that you get to a very basic level and have a legal definition of 'show cause' before you begin any of this process.
Well, I am going to recommend to the CIC that everyone, it's in everyone's bylaws in every neighborhood, and I think that we all need to take another look at that. Also, I noticed that as I reviewed the CIC bylaws, that they have an agreements committee for when things happen within the CIC, but maybe rather than bringing this to the City Commission, the CIC itself should have a bylaw in there that if a neighborhood is having a problem, they can come to the CIC and not to you. I had no other way to turn to, no other group, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That was very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. Kathy Hogan. I don't live in the city, but I'm Chair by default. I've asked, what, for 20 years or 10, for 12 years, for somebody to come and be Chair, but I'm not going to tell them I'm backing out. Take that off. Because I'm keeping it going till somebody will come and take over because I'm tired of doing it all myself. Anyway, I came in support of Tom. I think he's right. Our bylaws and how when we vote, when we have South End and Hazel Grove have a meeting together, if it's an issue, we want to send forward to you, we both vote together on it. But if somebody comes in and I'm, "South End wants to change their meeting dates, how many months they do it," I tell my people in South End, "It's their choice. I will facilitate whatever they want." And only those within that boundary, the urban growth boundary and the city limits, are allowed to vote. Nobody from Rivercrest or anywhere else is allowed to vote unless they're living in the urban growth boundary and the boundaries of that neighborhood association. And we haven't ever had a problem like that. But I am in support of Tom Guile. I think that's horrendous.
Thank you.
As I said, you're going to hear from several people, and what you've just suggested to me, and after all this is cleared up, I'd like to get a clarification from you if you think that it is our responsibility as a steering committee to go to Clackamas Heights, Clackamas Community College.
College. That was my mistake.
And if you'll, at the conclusion of this conversation this evening, if you'll give me the direction of, do I have the right of our steering committee to do that?
I don't think you need our direction. I don't. You've got a neighborhood association, and you have conflicts with a neighborhood association. I don't think you need our direction.
Okay. So I guess that, again, that...
You can say you spoke to us and we said, "Go for it," but, yeah.
But I've been to one of their classes in mediation, because somebody sent me because they want me to learn how to run the Hazel Grove, and it was very good on resolution. And they will come, and they would come to your neighborhood meeting and discuss it and give them a class in it.
And I'm fine with that, but I guess I'm asking, is this temporarily postpone our June 30th, July 1st handover, because those same people are still connected with us?
I don't think it can. Can it add?
You don't have supervisory control over the neighborhood association?
When we get into the discussion, I want to talk about that, but I'll wait until all the people have spoken.
And if you need, please call me back so I can get clarification. Thank you.
Very good. We have Larry Hallen and Nick, is it Dickerman or Dickerman?
Dirkman.
So.
Dirkman.
Hmm?
I'm listening.
Oh, Nick. No, you're, oh, Nick is, no, Larry, you're first.
Larry, you're first.
Mayor Neely, I concur with your recommendation, and I think it's counterproductive for me to even comment on this. I was there, that's the only reason I'm involved in it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Between the two of you, you used six minutes, and so that worked out. Nick, would you pronounce your last name?
Dirkman.
Dirkman, thank you.
My name is Nick Dirkman. I'm a resident of Argon City and also a proud resident of Park Place Neighborhood, and I'm the newly-elected Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Association.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All the new officers have been involved in Park Place for a long period of time. It's not, it's not like we, we've all been members of the steering committee. I've lived in the neighborhood for about eight years, and I've been actively involved in the neighborhood for, really, most of the time that I've lived there. I had travel jobs, I was out of town a lot, but I participated in a lot of activities, and so have the other members. I definitely don't want to diminish the work that Tom has done or the other officers and steering committee members have done, because I think we have had a great neighborhood association, and I think we've done a great job with what we've, what we have accomplished within the neighborhood, and I'm very proud of that. I think, I think we have a lot of opportunity to continue to grow, and I also do think that we have, I mean, my hope is that we can pull together and continue with a strong neighborhood association, and that, I do feel, though, that we went through a ballot election. I mean, if we have another election and the outcome is different, can I come back and say I want another election? I don't understand how we can have elections and not have them count as official elections. It just doesn't, that does not make sense to me. You know, again, I don't want to, the election itself was managed, it was planned and managed by Tom, so I don't really understand, you know, he may not have felt that it was done correctly at that particular meeting, but he was the one that organized the election process. So I, you know, I really feel that it's, that we had a fair election, and I do, I do agree that we need, you know, the mediation or getting together with somebody independent to help us work through the situation, I think would be very valuable. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Kaczynski and Carter Stein.
Christine Kaczynski, a resident of unincorporated Clackamas County for 37 years. Myself and others attended the Park Place meeting on May 16th. As I observed the voting process, it was flawed in many ways and did not seem fair. Some persons did not sign in, did not have name tags. Ballots were passed out by three to four persons. Therefore, why did some people come forward to take yet another ballot? Did some now have more than one? Some guests were given a ballot and they voted. While myself and others, who were also guests, did not get a ballot, we didn't have the opportunity to vote. It was after voting had taken place and the ballots had been collected when several persons stood up stating that anyone living, having a business in, or simply anyone just having an interest in Park Place could vote. Therefore, myself and several others found out after the voting process was closed that we could have voted. Several of us were prevented from casting our votes. It took an inordinate amount of time for the counters to count the votes. If the ballots were that confusing and incorrectly marked, the vote should not have been accepted. To be fair to the people of Park Place, a revote should be undertaken. I question why the neighborhood association policy does not correlate with city policy regarding voting rights. For instance, I cannot vote in a city election. I don't live in the city, I live in the county. If city regulations state that only citizens living within the city may vote in city elections, then why doesn't this same regulation apply to your neighborhood elections, allowing only those within their boundaries to vote? It can be argued whether this election was legal, but certainly what took place was a moral issue affecting the heart of this community. It is my hope that a good outcome, which is both legal and morally fair, can be achieved for Park Place, a neighborhood so vital to Oregon City as you grow into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Carter Stein.
I'm Carter Stein, Oregon City Park Place Neighborhood Association. Last time I talked to you all, I gave you a heads-up that things were a little scurvy in Park Place Neighborhood. Bad actors showed up. You've heard about this election that was flawed, and I appreciate the recommendation, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a good one. Whether or not there's heart left in Tom Guile, myself, or others that have been involved in this is another question. I do have to address something that Mr. Nirkman said. In being involved in Park Place Neighborhood Association, I sat at Steve and Linda Van Haberbeek's dining room table with Nancy, myself, Tom Guile, Linda, and Steve. I didn't see Nick Dirkman, I didn't see Don Slack, I didn't see these people that said they'd been involved. So they're telling you one thing, I'm seeing something else, and I just thought, you all need to see that. So I think Tom should be commended and applauded for the work that he's done. He's really showed some passion, and he's really tried to do the right thing. So it's just disappointing to see the Nixonian politics that's gone on here at the local level, and it's despicable, and I think we can do better as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Edgar.
Madam Mayor. I'm sorry.
And I was...
Mayor Neely.
When I was about six years old, there was this bread, they call it Miss Sunbeam Bread.
Yeah.
And they got, they had a mask, some kind of contest, a mask called a Miss Sunbeam, which I put on, and my mother and the woman across the street thought it'd be nice to put me in a dress. I got in a dress, and I ran outside, thinking none of the kids would recognize me because of the mask. Of course, that wasn't true. That's all right.
Mayor Neely and City Commissioners, my name is Paul Edgar. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. The process of what occurred at Park Place Neighborhood, I've been reading and tracking all of the correspondence, the attorney, city attorney's opinion, and I'm pretty well up to date on it, but I guess it really comes down to one issue to me, one man, one vote. And when we have significantly more votes than we have attendees at this meeting, it doesn't count. It's just not right. The integrity of the meeting and the process has been violated in its entirety. That's not the American way. Maybe in Chicago, they're not here to represent themselves, or some other place.
Actually, there are people from Chicago originally.
They've got a new mayor now, so they're probably getting it out straight. But all I can say is that I appreciate your comment about mediation. I appreciate your comment about this because I think that this overflows into the integrity of the CIC in itself. If you look at the CIC as a, as a city governing body, and all of a sudden we have representation that's coming in, and the integrity of those people in the vote process that got them there is maybe in question, and I think in this case, it's more than maybe in question. Then in fact, what it does is it hurts the city as a whole. And for that reason, I would ask that you keep this right up in front on your burners. We need to have, in my perception, a new revote take place, but I go along with the whole idea of allowing the process to work its way through, just because we, that we allow the process to be violated once doesn't mean that we need to repeat it again and violate it again. So let's do it right this next time around. Thank you.
Okay. That's the last person on our agenda list. We may have some more, but most of the people have discussed this particular topic, and I know, Jim, you had something to say. I have a couple of thoughts, too.
Thank you. Direct my inquiry to the city attorney and the city manager. I'm wondering if there might be a role for the city in this, and I guess my thoughts on this come from the review I did of all the materials on this, including, I was, I was kind of floundering as to the city's authority on this, and in reviewing the comp plan and the municipal code, I was struck by the fact that neighborhood associations don't seem to be mentioned in city code.
That's right.
That's, that's, that's very interesting to me, and I think it might be an idea for the city to consider raising, you know, the level of our neighborhood association system to having codes that might, for example, describe how a neighborhood association vote should take place. So there could be very consistent standards and guidelines for the neighborhood associations.
You can certainly direct us to do that.
The other thing, and this might be within that, that suggestion, the sense I got from reading these materials was that the neighborhood associations really come out of the comp plan and our Goal One responsibilities under the State Land Use Goals. And if it's, if it's in part a land use question, my recollection is the city commission has the ability to interpret our ordinances.
Always have the ability to interpret, you have to have a basis for interpretation.
I, in the comments, one of the things that, in reading the materials, one of the things that really did strike me is this whole issue of the term "show cause for interest." That's clear as mud. I mean, it's just, I don't know what that means. And if in fact, it does allow, because that phrase seems to be, come from a template that the city drafted and was in all of these agreements with the recognition agreements for every neighborhood association. So it's something that came from us, and I'm wondering if you might want to amend that or at least interpret that phrase to, for clarity. I do agree that, I don't think it should be a question of someone being able to show up to a neighborhood association meeting and say, "I'm interested," and let them vote. I think the problem with a hostile takeover in a neighborhood, I'm not saying that it happened in this case, but hypothetically, that kind of language and its lack of clarity makes neighborhood associations and neighborhood groups vulnerable. So I would really want us as a city to kind of like resolve that problem, and I think that's, that's not, that's not only our, we have that authority, I think it's our responsibility in, you know, this, this whole situation, I think, highlights the need to get a handle on it. Those are my thoughts.
Well, there's two things. First of all, the prospective remedy that the Commissioner suggested is certainly yours to direct us to do. A past city commission did not see that responsibility or did not see it in the way that now circumstances have presented it to you. The second issue is the trickier one, and I know you know that, and that is, do you want to do anything in this case, given what you have, the fairly thin basis that you have for... have for intervention?
My thought on that is, I don't want to go there right now.
Right.
Because a very good suggestion has been made by the mayor, and I'm hoping the neighborhood association will follow that advice. We could have that discussion on what our powers are retrospectively. I don't want to go there at this point. I want to invite the neighborhood association to take up the mayor's advice.
And if I might echo a little bit of what the city attorney said, a different fashion, of the neighborhood associations that are active, if you look at, at least I'm only going to look at the snapshot of the last year and a few weeks, most of them are working really well.
Oh, yes.
And this one is working really well in other respects until the fairly recent development. So I think if you're going to think about a broader solution, not just these election anomalies and things that happen to the state, the counties, counties all over Oregon have entire departments dedicated to conducting fair, legal elections. It's not an amateur event if it's going to be done the right way. So for cities to get involved at that level, I don't think was ever really contemplated at, when you think about neighborhood associations. In fact, there are many cities in Oregon that don't have these active neighborhood associations. And I actually think that that's one of the better things for, I think it's one of the better things for Oregon City that we have these associations, and that people care enough to show up and they're active. So I would want you to, I would, I guess, want to discourage anything that would kind of throw a wet blanket on the system of neighborhood associations. I think, Mayor, your suggestion is really valid. I think most of your associations are working well. This is a blip on a radar screen that I hope a few years from now, nobody will remember, most particularly the folks that are affected personally by it. So I'm hoping that maybe we focus on that solution, as you're suggesting, and see how it goes. And then if the council wants to proactively look at the future, one thing you might want to think about is a set of standardized bylaws or something like that, that you could put into a resolution or an ordinance and say, when there's turnover of officers, this is how you'll do it. You still have to rely, to some extent, on the folks that are running the associations to be fortunate enough to pull one of these off in a way that people can all support, which, again, there's entire departments dedicated to this, and there's still controversy. So that's all.
I'll watch you speak in a moment, but I wanted to speak for a moment. I want to come to the bylaws. When Mary Palmer was here, there was a recommended structure that was given to them, that every one of the neighborhood associations really had a different view of the community they wanted to serve. Some of those bylaws were specific, only residents within the neighborhood associations, others residents within the city or the city boundaries. I remember that their neighborhood association, they had people that were not in the urban growth boundary, and the neighborhood associations wanted to invite them as full participants. And I would want to shy away from a given kind of structure for what the neighborhood association represents, because each of these areas are rather distinct. We've got tremendous variation in Oregon City in terms of the structure of neighborhoods and everything else. So when we look at this, for one person to talk about what their neighborhood association does and what another one doesn't, they've got to make the determination of what body they represent. And so we need to be a little bit flexible in the bylaws, from my standpoint. I only saw some hands coming up.
One comment?
Yeah, so we're going to let the commissioners have a voice here for a minute, but the two of you can come up and listen to us, we're dabbling. Yes, Betty?
So I just wanted to just make a blanket statement, and Mr. William probably can speak to this, and Mr. Tom Guile. When we first reactivated the Citizen Involvement Council a few years ago, we did talk about standardized bylaws for neighborhood associations. It was made very clear to us that each neighborhood association is individual, and they do not want standardized bylaws. Just so, I'm putting it out there. My only comment. Thank you.
Okay. No other comments from the commissioners, I'll start with.
Good old what's-his-name. If I may reidentify myself.
Yes, please do, and where you reside.
My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Just briefly, and I'm trusting my fuzzy old memory now, which is always a dangerous thing to do, but as I recall, when I was chair of the McLaughlin Association, we grappled with this very issue of membership. And as I recall, we did make a modification to our bylaws. It said that a member of the association either had to reside in the city, within the boundaries that were prescribed, or own property, because they would have a vested interest, or they would be employed within that district. Because I think that there used to be this, or showed a general interest, and we thought that didn't make any sense, nobody can just drop by and make a comment. So as I recall, those are the three criteria that McLaughlin set out, but as Commissioner Mumm points out, I think each neighborhood has tweaked and modified its own bylaws.
I'd like to verify that, because I remember specifically a meeting after you had moved out of the neighborhood and came to it, and we had a vote, and he abstained from voting because he no longer lived in the neighborhood, and that was part of the discussion.
Mr. Guy, comments?
One regarding the bylaws. Park Places are probably the most unique at this point, because at the last meeting, we altered our bylaws. We had a committee, including Nick Dirkman and Carter, and I put in two new bylaws, or I suggested them, excuse me, and one was to protect us, again, in the future, of someone acting outside the realm of the responsibility of a steering committee. In other words, not one person can just request funds to go put out a newsletter, it takes two officers. And that's been in our bylaws, but we've never had a grievance area where, what do you do if someone does? And the second bylaw that we added was, what do you do if somebody's not doing their job and not calling meetings? How do you respond? You call a steering committee. Again, trying to place all this back on a steering committee. My plan was that after this election, and those bylaws were approved, was to bring them to the CIC and show the other neighborhoods, I think we all need to work together to find ways, because if it's happened to us, it could happen in your neighborhood. You need to have different things in place. If the city and everybody comes together and say, "We need some changes of wording that we should all include," as long as I'm CIC chair, that would be one of my priorities to do that. From what I've been told, I guess, Steve had knocked on the window of Larry and said that Tom's no longer going to be the chair of the CIC, Larry's going to be the next chair. So I may not be there at this point, but if I'm there, I intend to make sure that these are addressed and that they're also in the CIC. The other thing was, Carter mentioned about Hart. Ever since this happened, as you know, I told you, I asked somebody, there wasn't a litmus test, I just said, "Could you send a representative of the PTA?" Since this happened, and they were at the meeting, they've since said that if this is allowed to stay on this election, they have a family to raise, and they have a PTA to run, and they're no longer interested to be on the steering committee. They won't go to probably mediation, not because they don't like them or us, they don't want any part of politics. Secondly, the same thing existed for the Oregon City View Manor Collection sites. They said, "We've got a responsibility to 199 families here, and we're not going to get torn apart by all this conversation about this." The heart of the rest of us, this is embarrassing to people like Jackie, who said to me, "All my interest is the farmers' market. If I get in the middle of this kind of stuff, then my goal of making that successful is defeated." So I have a feeling that while it's a good suggestion to do this, I have a feeling that the heart has been torn out by this election and what's happened, and we may see a mass exodus of the steering committee. I'd hate to see that happen, because I'd like to see it resolved, but if people leave and I'm alone, I'm not going to stay either. And so here's our problem. I wished that this commission could say, until the mediation takes place, that the actual election does not take place, or the offices don't start on July 1st, let's go to this mediation, and maybe we can come up with a partisan, co-chair type of a neighborhood association. Other neighborhoods do have co-chairs.
Tom, when I made my comment to the city attorney, and as I shared with you, I do think there's authority on the city commission to do something. But I think if we lowered that heavy boom, at least this early in the process, that might create more problems than it solves.
Yes.
Okay? So what I would like you to do is maybe keep in mind that there is some authority, but please try to make it work without going to resorting to that.
I don't think anymore. I think the heart's been taken out by the games, and so people just don't want to continue and fight. It's so negative in there right now.
I would suggest calling a steering committee in which your focus of your first meeting is to bring forth a facilitator.
Yep.
And don't get bugged down in the things that happen at the election. Agree, we get a facilitator in, start talking about those issues. And it'd be difficult, I mean, you've had representatives on both sides of the ballot that have spoken here, and my guess is they want something positive to come out of this. If you make that the focus of your next steering committee meeting, forget about the rivers, forget all about the election, actually, and focus on bringing a mediator in and to start working with you all, I think that'll be the first step in the process.
I understand, and I appreciate that. As you all know, you all received an email a few weeks back from Nick Dirkman questioning Nancy Walters' role on Urban Renewal. They had wanted me to write something into our rules about that. I had to ask David. What I'm saying is that those kind of things are going to come up, and mediation's not going to resolve it.
I'll make the comment on Urban Renewal. My recollection is, the neighborhood association, when we had this law, they'll recommend three people for us to consider. We then, we selected Nancy to serve. That decision's already been made. Okay? What happens after her term, if it's functioning the way it's supposed to be, the neighborhood association, which I hope is in existence, will nominate three more people from which we make a selection. Nancy's position on the Urban Renewal Commission, I don't think is challenged, because that selection was made through a given process. So that's.
Different.
That's different.
Yep.
So that should be decoupled.
That would be nice.
And there's no provision for recall. So, I mean, just go forth with that reassurance.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Dirkman, come on for it.
I just wanted to say about the Urban Renewal Commission, and the question that I raised was a simple question to say, I looked at the bylaws of the Urban Renewal Commission, and I asked the question about, what does representation mean? That was my question, because we expected that we would have some input, that the city commission decided to create those various positions to represent those areas and represent the people that live in those particular communities, be it live in or be represented by, I know there's businesses and all those types of things. So that's really what we were looking for, is what does that mean? And what should we, is there an expectation that we should have? Because it's not been clear. So I never challenged that Nancy's position, that we wanted to replace Nancy, or any, that was never a question in my mind. My question was, what does representation mean? So, thank you.
Now, we haven't had other speakers, and.
Steve wanted to speak.
Steve? Come on.
My name is Steve Van Haberbeek, resident of Oregon City, recently elected chair of the Park Place Neighborhood, which is definitely under discussion at this time.
Congratulations. And good luck.
I agree with the concept of mediation, but I want everyone to keep in mind that Tom ran the election. He was the one who set the rules, who produced the ballot, who said, "Here's the way it's going to be done." So neighbors got together and decided, "We will follow those rules and attempt to put in our own set of candidates." It worked. I do not know how many people were there. I wasn't involved with keeping track of any of the information, nor did I see how many were standing against the walls, nor who voted. I did mention, after the ballots were collected, that, no, it wasn't limited to just people that lived in the neighborhood, which was what Tom had mentioned, because one of our steering committee members does not live in our neighborhood. She works there. So she definitely has an interest in the neighborhood. And I would hope that she would stay on, but apparently she has decided not to. I talked to Tom after the election, and he said, "I think I should resign." The last time I heard "I think I should resign," it was Nancy, who said, "Well, we're not having a meeting, so I think I should resign." So all I was wanting to do this entire time was find out, why aren't we meeting? We had a January meeting that was supposed to have been held of the steering committee, so I sent an email out saying, "When are we meeting?" I got no response, either from Tom or from Nancy. I then talked to Tom at the February CIC meeting, asking if we were going to meet. I got no response from Tom. My wife had attempted to talk to Nancy and was told that she was too busy to meet, and that was also in February. So we knew that if we hold a meeting with a controversial topic, we will get people to show up. So the rivers was the topic that would get people there, so we tried that. Then, all of a sudden, Tom took control of the meeting and ran it as a meeting of neighbors and not a Park Place Neighborhood meeting, although it was held on the night that our bylaws said we were supposed to have a meeting at the place that we were supposed to have a meeting, with the announcements, and none of these things were done by either Tom or Nancy. So at that point, Tom had said that the neighborhood association was dead, Nancy had said that the neighborhood association was dead. So we took it. Four people in the steering committee decided that, yes, we could revitalize the Park Place Neighborhood. It actually worked. We've had meetings, we've had people show up at meetings. Tom has done a wonderful job of coordinating that and being involved and producing a really good Park Place newspaper. And I'm just disappointed that Tom feels that the only way he can be involved is from the top. I'm not a strong leader. I will coordinate. I would like to hear other people's ideas and let other people bring them forward. That's what I think the chair of the Park Place Neighborhood should be, should not be pushing a personal agenda. Was kind of taken aback by seeing these, the thing that Tom showed that said, "We are supporting the rivers." Well, I do support the rivers, but that's not what I was there for. So all I can say is, let's see if we can mediate. I hope that people will stay involved. Nancy has done a wonderful job coordinating money that's coming in to support improvements in our community. So I would hope that she would continue on that. I can't run it by myself, I have no intention of running it by myself. But when they're saying, "No, I can't even serve," well, let's use the rules and do what we're supposed to do, and have a part. what we're supposed to do, and have a Park Place Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
I have a question for the attorney on Roberts Rules of Orders, and that is, if a meeting is to be declared, to be declared an official meeting, doesn't there have to be a roster of attendance?
I don't know, and those objections should have been raised at the time. I will, I will look it up and inform you, but, I'm not sure that that's a requirement, but I will look at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
For a minute, I thought I was in my classroom at the high school. But I'm not, I'm at City Hall, and, it's really sad. It's, you know, you can definitely see people on both sides that are so passionate about it, and passionate about their neighborhood. You gotta work together. And, you know, I hope it happens. I think the recommendation that's been put forward is probably the best one for now. We need to kind of ask questions, citywide, I think, about how to, to make sure some things like this don't happen again, but, so I hope there's a solution. I would encourage, I would encourage the members that are currently serving, to not just bail out.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that neighborhood needs all of you, and you all need to work together. It may not be easy at first, but, I think, it will make that neighborhood stronger. And all those viewpoints need to be heard, at the city level, and at the CIC level. So, I, I hope that you put as much effort into the resolution, as you have here tonight, on both sides. Because it's just, it's sickening to kind of hear this, and I, it's unfortunate. So, I hope, we, I hope, I hope there's a resolution.
I've got myself down, and what I was going to comment on is, I presume for Roberts Rules, to hold the bylaws, or whatever the functioning document of the neighborhood association would have to say that specifically, so, they would not necessarily hold in their-
No. What I don't know is whether Roberts requires it, the, the recognition resolution does not.
No.
Their, their resolution does say that they go by Roberts Rules of Orders.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, oh, theirs does, okay.
That's correct. And, but, again, there's the issue of the objection having to be raised at the same meeting.
I was going to make, following on, what Commissioner Smith said. I'm going to ask, that the current Chair and the Chair-elect actually write a joint letter to the members of the, some left, but all of those members, whether they've left or not, write a joint letter to them, inviting them to a steering committee in which mediation will occur. Just a suggestion.
So, Mayor, we haven't adopted our agenda yet for tonight?
Well, not quite. I just, I wanted, I wanted to make it clear to-
Why rush?
No, I want to make it clear to members in the audience, that if you had an issue that you wished to present, and it's not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Okay? Having said that, shall we adopt the agenda? Or, then we can take a break, but let's adopt the agenda first.
I'm kind of thinking that 7A, we might have people in the audience for 7A, so can we move that forward?
Yeah, we could do that. After we take a break.
Okay. So, 7A would be the-
Is that okay with everybody?
Same A and B are together.
Oh, A and B.
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Take them together. Yes, we can. So, will we go to general business first? Okay. Ten minutes. Ten minutes. Should we move into general business, taking that before the public hearing? And our first one is an ordinance for introduction, the Many of the Clackamas Cable Access Intergovernmental Agreement, and David Frazier will bring us to it.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of West Lynn, as you know, has an IGA with the City of Oregon City, that was established many years ago, for operation of Willamette Falls Television, which we are now, I now understand, as we call it, Willamette Falls Media Center, mostly due to the proliferation of various media besides television that they're involved in. And, a few weeks ago, recently, Willamette Falls, or, West Lynn, rather, adopted an ordinance, which is in your packet, which you've all seen, asking to amend that IGA, to essentially form a, a committee, that would allow the cities, to each appoint their city managers, to provide oversight for the operation of the Willamette Falls Media Center. This is prefaced, I think, with interest in action, at least my interest in this, is to do everything we can to make sure that Willamette Falls Media Center operates well, effectively, they have the tools they need, the resources they need, and that there's a, perhaps better communication and coordination between them, and some of the city representatives on both sides of the river. And so, with that, you have an ordinance before you. We have this IGA that requires, actually, both cities to cooperate on this. So, you don't have to pass the ordinance. If you don't pass the ordinance, then, that goes back to West Lynn, and then, it's sort of their move, and they could decide it, if, depending on the, you know, how they feel about that, they could decide to draft a different ordinance, or they could withdraw from the IGA, at which time, the media center would dissolve, and the assets would be divided, and the corporation would go away. There's, I think, been at least several years of history here, of questions about, I think the cities frankly took kind of a hands-off approach to this thing, maybe longer than they should have. In the time that I've been here, I've probably seen more than a dozen meetings with people from both the, the media center, and from West Lynn, trying to facilitate better financial oversight of the day-to-day operations. I think it's been a learning experience for many folks, and I think that we can make this work. It kind of reminds me of what we just saw with our neighborhood association, there can be conflict, based on personalities and issues, but at the end of the day, we want to make this work. And, so, the ordinance before you is one that was adopted by West Lynn. I think they have a council member here, who's also willing to represent their council, and speak to you about what West Lynn's official position is. And I believe members of the CCAB are also here. And so, I'd like to ask the council to just, let me know if you have questions, and then we'll deliberate, and see where it goes.
As, Councilor Mike Jones is the first on the docket.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor Neely, and members of the Oregon City Commission. I am Mike Jones, I'm a resident of West Lynn, and a member of the West Lynn City Council. I am also an appointed member of the Clackamas Cable Access Board, but I want to be clear with you, that I am not here tonight in that capacity, and my comments are not necessarily the views of the CCAB. In fact, the CCAB has not ratified any statement regarding this ordinance, and I would have to assume, that any board member speaking tonight is speaking as an individual. However, I am here tonight, to speak to you as a West Lynn City Councilor. As you know, on May 16th, the West Lynn City Council approved the ordinance that you are considering this evening. I would like to give you some context, about why the West Lynn City Council unanimously approved the ordinance on first and second readings. An intergovernmental agreement between our two cities forms the Clackamas Cable Access Board, or CCAB. The CCAB oversees Willamette Falls Media Center. The IGA, as written and amended, is confusing, and in many ways contradictory. And if any of you have spent any time with that IGA, you know it's really probably more than confusing and contradictory. Before you tonight is an ordinance that would amend the IGA to create a municipal oversight committee. While this ordinance might seem overly broad, it was the only way we could find to clarify the IGA, without completely rewriting the IGA. It is at least West Lynn's intent, that the municipal oversight committee provide basic financial and managerial oversight to the media center. If passed by both cities, it is the West Lynn City Council's expectation, that the city managers would issue a memorandum that clarifies the responsibilities of the municipal oversight committee, and places long-range planning, and day-to-day operations in the hands of the CCAB. West Lynn has historically contributed more than $100,000 annually to the media center, and over the past decade, has contributed close to or over $1 million. Oregon City has contributed a similar amount. The CCAB is the only entity with representatives appointed by the West Lynn City Council, that is responsible for city funds, and allowed to budget and spend those funds, without oversight of the city council or city staff. The executive committee, as defined in the IGA, consisting of the mayors or city managers, may or may not have real authority to act, and can, given some interpretations, actually be viewed as subordinate to the CCAB. This limits the ability of our cities to enact any changes with the financial or managerial operations of the media center. This lack of accountability to voters and taxpayers is troubling to me, and my colleagues, and, and we shared this concern when we approved the amendment to the IGA. As our mayor, John Kovach, indicated at our council meeting, this relationship is upside down, and the cities who effectively own the media center, can be left subservient to the CCAB. In West Lynn, our budget committee, city council, audit committee, are very cognizant of our responsibility to spend the public's money in the most effective and efficient way possible. To delegate to the CCAB the responsibility of seeing an operating budget that now totals $300,000, with almost $300,000 in reserve, without the direct oversight of the two cities, is not acceptable to the City of West Lynn. Approval of this ordinance, and the creation of a municipal oversight committee, would result in the assurances that the media center is professionally managed, with the financial oversight that our cities expect, when our funds are in play. I believe this is what our citizens expect of us. Finally, again, I would like to state that the real issue before you is one of accountability. Simply put, should a volunteer board be accountable for the operations of an entity owned by the cities, or should that accountability rest with the city managers, and the elected officials of the city? In my mind, the answer's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm going to go ahead, if I might, because you're, you're representing, the ordinance is before you, is one that I understand is passed. Is it the first reading?
First and second reading. And actually, if I may, we passed it, we, we didn't know when your, this commission would act, so we passed it as an emergency ordinance, so that we can time it with whatever, if, assuming, or, if you pass the, I'm not trying to assume anything about how you're going to act, but if you pass the ordinance, we, we have done first and second reading, and we can fit the time to your timeframe, and that's why we passed it as an emergency ordinance. Not that there was, in fact, a, an emergency, other than, we knew we wanted to be able to, to segue everything in smoothly, should, should you choose to pass this ordinance.
I, I guess I'll hold my comments. We've got people from the Cable Access, but I might call you forward afterwards, if that's okay with you.
I'd be happy, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. I have Pat Gleason and Janelle Neal, is that correct? To come forward, please.
Yes.
Introduce yourself, and, and if you've got an affiliation in any way, go ahead and indicate what that affiliation is, with the Cable Access.
My name is Pat Gleason, and I reside actually in Portland, but I produce two programs that are here, on your, on the Cable Access, A Heart for God, and Signs of Praise. These two programs have been on the air, for at least five years, for A Heart for God, and, just recently, we put the Signs of Praise on the air. I've been an independent producer for at least 10 years now, and I've had my program on the air throughout the metro area, and this is one of the areas that we get many calls from. We get a lot of people, a lot of interest out there, that it's, it's a vital, vital part of our, our program. So, basically, I wanted, I'd like to see it continue as it is. However, I know there does need to be some oversight. You can't just let, you know, a bunch of people run it, without having anything else to say about it, and the two cities are definitely the ones that are in charge. So, I feel that you should have that. But I also feel you still, you know, if there's issues with getting enough money into it, or having any other problems with the programming itself, then you should have a say on that as well. If there is issues with money, then, as, as other access I've seen, they charge the producers, you know, like membership rates, have an annual membership form, so they can raise the money that way, or charge to use the equipment, or charge to use the facilities. And, I know that, you know, nominal fees are easy for us to handle. Most of us are, like I said, most of the people I know that are independent producers like this, run on a very short budget, and we try to do as much as we can with volunteers. And I'm definitely like that. But I definitely would like to see it continue as it is, with the oversight needed. Thank you.
Very good.
Janelle Neal, and I am a staff member of Willamette Falls Media Center, and, I just wanted to share maybe, a staff perspective, on the organization, and the work that we do. So, I'm going to read. I am a staff member, and a community member of WFMC. I do have, or, I should start with, why, when I say that, do I ask myself, and feel as though I have a residue of chagrin? Hopefully, by the end of my time, you will wonder why as well. I do, however, feel very accomplished tonight, and would like to share the reasons why, with the commission, city staff, and members of the community, that have made this possible. I am a member of a group of people, that practices daily, an approach towards their community, with pure moxie. In the four years that I have worked for this organization, WFMC has become for me, as it has for most staff, a mission to share and put into practice, our skillsets for community-based communications. For me, WFMC is not a job, it is a post. We are very fortunate to have two staff members, that are the remaining members of the original volunteer operations, that started WFTV, here at WFMC. Because of their history and knowledge of public access, staff is inspired, not only for the community. We volunteer for WFC, outside of our regular scheduled hours, as well. Steve Johnson and Melody Ashford are the senior staff, that provide the architecture, technical operation, of channel management, program development, and video consultation for WFMC. And they have worked tirelessly alongside commissioners and city staff, to make WFMC a longstanding member of the community. Traditionally, public access means access to facility, that provides opportunities, tools, and training, with access to a channel, to air their content. WFMC expands that further. The mission of WFMC staff also provides fundamental PEG programs for its communities. For me, more importantly, in discussing the public side of what WFMC does, means the civic responsibility that this organization provides, for the underserved populations and, of participating cities, and includes the unincorporated townships of Clackamas County, as well. This is the P that stands for public in the acronym PEG. Some of WFMC's communities do not have immediate resources for digital communication programs, inside of their school districts. WFMC provides internship opportunities to organizations that support high-risk students. WFMC also provides a way to create promotional material, for the educational organizations- WFMC also provides a way to create promotional material for the educational organizations like Community Ed and the Oregon City School District, and that makes the E, which stands for education. WFMC also works in tandem with Oregon City's videographer, providing staffing coverage upon request of the G that stands for government in the acronym PEG. Additionally, inclusive services provided to the cities of Oregon City take the form of unlimited assistance for the city recorders department in formatting public records of meetings specifically in the area of cable cast and archival. WFMC is the primary production house for city-sponsored outreach events. In recognition of the individual needs of the community and to support the independence, WFMC hosts programs like the Green Thumb Program, Senior Community Service Employment Program, and Easter Seals for work experience and skill building in the industry of media and communications. In its past, WFMC has provided work experience for the disabled. In securing a Clackamas County Community Block grant of $44,000, WFMC is now ADA accessible. WFMC will continue to provide services to our disabled members of the community. I myself have greatly benefited as a member of the WFMC community. That has allowed me to learn and grow at my post. I have had the opportunity, under the mentorship of Melody Ashford, to overcome my own personal deficits, cultivate communication skills, and share my personal interests unhindered. I have been given the opportunity to work with and for passionate people that come to WFMC to do the same for themselves. I am honored to have allowed to be served in my capacity, and I thank the community for allowing me to be their steward. And I leave you with the words Melody left me the other day: "We are standing at the edge of change." My hope is that this change will continue to reflect the tenets of its past. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Very nice presentation, I appreciate it. Dan Holliday.
Well, just for the record, my name's Dan Holliday, since no one here knows me. I am the chair of the Clackamas Cable Access Board. I was appointed to the board by Mayor Neely in January this year, or?
You were appointed by Mayor?
Oh, by Mayor Norris, actually, that's correct.
She consulted me, but she was actually the mayor when you were appointed.
That's right. So that was in November. In January, the, by our bylaws, the board chair changed hands, and it alternates between West Lynn and Oregon City on an annual basis, and I was reluctantly elected chair of this organization at that time. I want to make sure that you folks understand that no matter where I am on the political spectrum, when I'm given a job, that becomes my job. And so, as chair, and understand that I'm speaking for myself tonight as an individual board member and not as the chair, and I'm not speaking for the organization, but when I took over as chair, my prime mission is to ensure the continued operation and success of the center. And so, everything that I do when I'm talking about Willamette Falls Media Center is centered on that mission. So, I have some concerns about the ordinance, and I'll talk about those in a second, but I do want to say something about the organization as a whole, and that is, is that, there's been some suggestions made, that there's this big pot of money that, you know, somehow or another, that's just been sitting there. And the fact is, is that Melody and the rest of the staff scrimped and saved over five or six years, knowing that they were going to move out of the facility in downtown Oregon City, and they were going to go somewhere else, because, you know, surprise, there's a parking issue in downtown Oregon City. And if you know about producers or computer geeks, you know that once they get in front of one of those things, sometimes they lose track of time. And we were losing producers because they'd get behind an editing computer, and what they were expecting to spend an hour turned into three, and they'd go out and they'd find two parking tickets on their cars, and they finally just, it was not working. So these guys scrimped and saved and used Craigslist and got donations, and we built this brand-new facility inside a, you know, we recycled a building, you know, if we want to talk about green. We recycled a building on the old Oregon City High School campus, turned an old gym into probably the best public access media center.
It was an art room.
Huh?
It was an art room. It was a gym prior.
Originally, it was a gym.
It was my art room.
I actually put electronics in the basement at that building, so, but have built through, you know, hundreds of, hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer effort and scrimping and saving, probably the best public access media center on the West Coast. And I don't know if everybody has been to the facility. If you haven't been, I would encourage you, I'll meet you there, I'll give you a tour, you know, we can, I can show you what we can do. I have been involved, not as a board member, but as a volunteer producer from time to time over the last 20 years. And I know that when I was sitting up there, I, because I didn't have cable at the time, I was constantly amazed, as I'm sure you are, of people walking up to you in the Fred Meyer store going, "Hey, I saw you on TV." And you go, "Man, don't you have a life?" So, to get to the point, you know, this is a very important, an integral part of our community, and I sense that there may be, you know, in these economic times, there may be an interest in using the public access franchise fees to do other things other than public access. And I personally find that offensive, because the original intent of the federal government legislation that originally enacted franchise fees was to do two things. One, the franchise fees for RightofWay was to compensate municipal governments and other entities for the space that these utilities were taking inside the municipal structure. The other half of the franchise fees were specifically designed to make sure that there was continued access to the airwaves for the public as a whole. And if we allow governments to continue to chip away to the point where we can't afford to provide public access, there'll probably always be government, you'll probably always be able to see the city commission, because, you know, that channel doesn't, that piece of it doesn't take much. You've already bought the, you know, the PEG funds, the money comes directly to you to buy your equipment and those sorts of things, but it's the people like our church families, like our hobbyists, you know, we've got all kinds of, shall I say, quirky programming, but all of that is important to a certain group of people out there. Our church families especially, because they have people that are shut-ins and that are sick or have been gone, maybe they were gone, and they, but they still want to be able to participate in their service, and that's the only way they can get that program. So, and I realize I'm running a little over, but I apologize. I believe that if this ordinance passes in its current form, that WFMC will cease to exist within a year or so. And I respectfully disagree with Mr. Jones that there isn't another entity that is run by volunteers and has its own budget, because some of you guys sit on South Fork. And while you may be, while you may be accountable to your voters in Oregon City, none of you as South Fork Water Board members are accountable to the voters in West Lynn. So, there is precedent for the operations the way it is. I do have to mention one more thing while I'm sitting here, and that is, is that big hoo-ha was made over the fact that there was some $48,000 worth of unaccounted-for expenses in the Moss-Adams report. I have delivered to the city of Oregon City, the city of West Lynn, and Moss-Adams, as well as other interested parties, this documentation, which you've all gotten electronically, that shows all of the receipts, all of the documentation, for every penny of what was in that report. And a large disservice was done to our employees by not allowing them to have the opportunity to respond to that report before this information was released to the press. And so, when we released this to the press, of course, there hasn't been a story, but, you know, when there's bad things, you know, that's front-page news. So, you know, I think that we owe the employees and staff at Willamette Falls Media Center an apology for not allowing them to produce this documentation and refute some of the things that were said in the report. Having said that, we fully believe, and I think in this instance, I can say that all of the board members agree, that we agree with the findings on pages nine and 10 about instituting, you know, proper financial controls and, you know, working up to that sort of a level of, on the other hand, we did have all that documentation, there wasn't any missing money, nobody was taking anything, all the equipment's there, so there really is no basis for this, you know, alleged need to have all this financial control, because there really wasn't any problem there in the first place. So I would encourage you to find another method of fixing whatever we seem to perceive as a problem, and as of yet, beyond maybe the lack of financial education or experience, which Melody freely told the board over several years, I don't see that we have a problem here, and I think there's a way to fix it, and I think I would be happy to work towards a way that we can continue to have a viable public access station, and I think it would be a horrible disservice to the community to allow, after all this work and after building this new station, for it to disappear.
I'm going to, first of all, I'm going to make a statement. You did a very great job in terms of being very proactive, and I think a couple of your board members resigned because of concerns about fiscal management issues and so forth, and you say it was just basically sloppy bookkeeping primarily and a lack of, lack of those kinds of management skills. But your proactivity, locking down the station, keeping only the one employee that provides these services that we receive, and after, in fact, we got control of, you know, how the funds were going to be dealt with, then you brought the other employees back so you could provide these other services. They were, like any place else, when there's an investigation, you don't fire employees, you find out what the issues are first. And I want to compliment you on your proactive actions in that regard. Both city managers, the, our assistant to, our assistant to our city manager, assistant city manager of West Lynn, myself, the mayor of West Lynn, and a couple other councillors were there at those meetings with you. Sometimes things got a little hot, but they didn't remain that way. I mean, the dialogues were very productive, and I want to compliment you on your proactive actions.
Thank you.
I did this, and you've given me, I got it electronically, but you actually gave me a folder with a hard copy there. A lot of this information wasn't available to, when the audit was actually done, that's my understanding.
Well, I think, and I think that's a misconception. Because of the way that we had to close the studio, and that there was no staff there when, to explain how that happened, the next day, I went back with Richard Seal, the finance director from City West Lynn, and Nancy Young, the auditor from Moss-Adams, and we went through the facility, collected computers and files. But like many things, I mean, if somebody who doesn't know your house comes in and says, "I'm going to collect all of your financial data," well, surprise, surprise, it might not all be in the place that someone might expect it to be. And so, I believe that much of this stuff was just not in the places that some people might expect it to be, and that, again, is one of those things in the report about, you know, how we keep files and all of those sorts of things. But I, as I understand it, all of this information was in the studio, I just didn't get back to, because it was collected here so that, and taken back to Moss-Adams, so that we could reopen the studio as soon as possible to prevent any inconvenience or disruption of the services that we provide.
Okay, yeah, we've got David Frazier.
Well, I think this, I guess part of my concern as a manager is that I think we're seeing some of the evidence of why there probably needs to be changes in the management structure. And that is that, while I think there's been a lot of cooperation since the audit started and since we have new board members, Dan among them, in the 12 or so months that I was here before that, working on this with West Lynn, the city manager of West Lynn and I both wrote letters to the board asking them to do an audit, and it was, that wasn't done. And what was done was a financial review, so here we are. We didn't all participate and get on us here, but we are here, and I think in context, that's a problem. When you write letters for a year, asking, and maybe longer, asking for an audit, and it isn't done, and then it's finally done, I'm glad it's finally done, I'm really happy that there isn't any significant wrongdoing there, but I also want to address this point about shipping away at cable access funds. The city of Oregon City isn't doing that, and to my knowledge, the city of West Lynn isn't doing that. So I don't think that's, I mean, in context, what we're doing is, what we are doing is paying roughly $100,000 a year for the same service others are getting for $35,000 a year. And as a manager, a person responsible partly for these funds, I'm concerned about that, and I think that was one of the things that drove the discussions last year, the drug-on for a year with a different board, trying to get a different level of cooperation and control on the financial side of things. So that's another piece of why we're here. And then, then tonight, I think I, the first speaker came here and spoke and said that he was from Portland, and they're broadcasting a program here, and Portland isn't a member, I don't think they have a contract, they're not paying. I want to ask about that, because other cities that are paying, they have service contracts for 30-some thousand a year, and some, well, actually between 20 and 40, depending on who they are. I want to make sure there's some equity there, so that Oregon City isn't paying three or four times what other cities are paying. So I think most of this is not really about programming or the commitment of these employees, which seems to be tremendous. It's more about how you manage this equitably, and I actually hope that the managers, if we are in this position, do this, that we can help the board and have the board help us make the studio more productive and more fair and equitable to the cities that are supporting it.
I'm going to request at this time that Counselor Jones come back over, and I'd like you to remain, and that way we can have a discussion. The way this process occurred bothers me just a little bit, because although, although I think we knew the general content, you developed yours and passed two readings, and that's good. And I'm looking at the IGA, I'm just going to read a section of it, I think it could be modified very slightly and accomplish the same things it says. But it stays here, "Notwithstanding any other provision of the IGA, the MLC shall have authority over all aspects of CCA enterprise, including but not limited to overseeing CCAB," that is the board, "the personnel and the fiscal management of the enterprise." Part of this is because I think the board did a good, did a good job, and you've indicated that you don't question wrongdoing on the part of the personnel. This statement can be, the way, I'm going to suggest an edit of this, the same powers apply, by simply saying, "Withoutstanding other, notwithstanding any other provisions, the MLC shall have the authority over all aspects of the CCA enterprise, including but not limited to the fiscal management of the enterprise," because this is the issue that came forward. If there are issues that develop in terms of personnel, in terms of the board at some particular point, the "not limited to" permits us to look at that, but the reason that this was all triggered, I think, was because of fiscal concerns.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, and if I could, I do not have a copy of the ordinance that's in front of you, so forgive me if I stumble a little bit.
You'll get one, I'm sure.
Thank you so much. The issue is one of, you're correct, the issue is one of creating financial controls, and appropriate financial controls. I think Mr. Frazier- I think, Mr. Fraser, and I'm new to the CCAB board, and quite frankly, I was appointed to the CCAB board because we've had three resignations of board members, which is the West Lynn contingent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? In the last two months.
Mm-hmm.
That was a pretty big red flag for us. And I went on the CCAB board because it was the only way in looking at the IGA and having our attorneys look at the IGA. It was the only way that West Lynn, either its staff or its elected officials, could have any voice in what was happening with the CCAB. And quite frankly, that's just not right. Now, the issue is financial control. But if there's no managerial control, okay, then, in fact, the financial controls become moot. And we've seen that through the last year. And someone can correct me a bit on this history because I haven't dealt with this for a whole year. But I know, in fact, since 2007, that the city staff of West Lynn certainly, and I think in many cases, the city staff of Oregon City, have tried to institute financial controls. And they have been repeatedly, and this may be too strong, but have been repeatedly rebuffed by the CCAB because the CCAB has managerial control. Our mayor said it right. This whole thing is upside down. And believe me, no one in West Lynn, or at least no one on the council that I know of, wants to do away with the Willamette Falls Media Center. That's the farthest thing from our mind. What we do want to do is make sure that we're getting cost-effective service and that we have communication and that we, that we're accountable for the dollars that we're putting into the media center. And if you take out the element in that ordinance that relates to managerial control, then in fact, we're going to be right back where we were six months from now. And if that's the case, then unfortunately, I think, I think Mr. Holliday, and by the way, I also think he's done a great job. He and I don't agree all the time.
But I know that, I know I'm the only one that you don't agree with Dan, so.
But he has. He's done a great job and exerted a lot of very positive leadership, and I respect that greatly. But back to the topic at hand, what was I, I was going to disagree with you.
I'm not helping you.
Well, but the point is, pulling out those two savings does not affect anything. And maybe we need to look at, you've got in front of you.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting here...
Give me the, give me what you'd like to do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You go down to the line, it says, "including but not limited to."
Okay.
"Overseeing," and I say, "the fiscal management of the enterprise," because that's the number one concern that we've had. It doesn't preclude an oversight of the CCAB should it be necessary, or the personnel that should be necessary, because we have the phrase there, "not limited to." And maybe in terms of our board structure, we need to look at something else. Maybe, just like we have on South Fork, we have representatives of the council that are appointed to that board.
And we have representatives from both city on the council that are appointed to that board.
Exactly. Yes. And I think that's...
Which means we ought accountable as elected officials to our citizens.
That's right. And I think we could look at this other piece, overseeing the CCAB, to guarantee that we have some elected members that serve on the board, just like we do on South Fork.
Well, the, I think we'd like to get there, okay? And my concern, and I have read more of that IGA than I ever want to read again, okay? And more of the resolution, I mean, the IGA was written in the early 80s, mid 80s?
Late, yeah, early 80s.
I think '82. And there have been so many resolutions, memorandum piled on top of that thing, that it's incomprehensible. It really is. We, by the structure, if I understand it, there is a liaison that would be a city council member. You have one, we have one. But in fact, they have no voice, literally, no voice, okay? To the point where when draft minutes go out, when memorandum go out to the board members, the liaison, at least until I started requesting it, the liaison don't get those. There's, I think, I truly think that, you know, I won't argue for you to pass what you want to pass, okay? And I'll be happy to take it back. But I truly think the language as stated in here isn't bad. And it's contingent, and in my remarks that you have in front of you, it's contingent... The City of West Lynn doesn't want to run Willamette Falls Media Center, and no one on staff wants to run it, okay? So, it's contingent on our city managers getting together and writing out a very clear memorandum saying, "Here are the responsibilities of the new executive committee. Here are the responsibilities of the CCAB." And I think that can follow very quickly. I do disagree with Mr. Holliday. I have every reason to hope and think that the media center's going to be here a year from now, okay? If this doesn't pass, I think we're going to end up, or something similar to it, then I think we're going to end up in the same quagmire that we have. And it is entirely possible that the media center will certainly be different than it is now a year from now.
Mr. Holliday.
I actually, I like that idea. I think that's a great, your idea is a great solution.
I did discuss this with you.
Huh? No, no, no. I meant, this is the first time, this is the first time that I had, that I had actually, but to treat Willamette Falls Media Center like South Fork Water Board as an independent entity of, you know, it could be, because it virtually is the same kind of a utility with three board members from Oregon City and three board members from, elected board members from West Lynn, that's a solution that I could hardly accept and endorse. Because at that point, then, there is also some accountability for the citizens to say, "Hey, why are you guys taking our money away?" I do have to disagree with Mr. Fraser. I don't know how you can say, "We're taking your franchise fees from 32% of the total franchise fees collected to 16% and say you're not taking away franchise fee money." You know, that's simple math to me. So, you know, I could, I would absolutely support that if you wanted to change from the CCAB being appointed citizen members to the CCAB being the elected representation from both cities. I think that's a great compromise solution that would ensure the continued operations of the center.
Commissioner, councillor?
Yeah. I'm going to speak as an individual.
All right.
Okay. I obviously can't speak for the council on this because it's relatively new, okay? I think the South Fork Water Board is, provides an essential service and therefore deserves our time, okay? I think the Willamette Falls Media Center provide, doesn't provide a service that is that essential. And I personally, okay, personally, don't know that we'd want three elected officials from each city serving on that board.
Yeah. Actually, that's what he stated. I don't think that was my phrase, my phraseology was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That there would be elected representatives on the board. I didn't say they would all be elected representatives.
Thank you. Now, the problem with that, which again gets to why we need a resolution like this. The problem when we start those discussions, and those discussions have been going on, again, correct me, because I'm relatively new to this, for two or three years, it gets into changing the IGA, and you can't change the IGA.
I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that here.
Right.
Yeah, that's not the intent. This resolution, I think, what I've recommended, doesn't change the basis of the resolution because it says "not limited to." And so, that can include the CCAB and the personnel. I don't know what else is there besides those three things, but to actually, and it's basically because of proactive action that was done by the board.
I can, wait a minute. So, you would change to say, "The MLC shall have authority over all aspects of the CCA enterprise, including but not limited to the fiscal management of the enterprise."
That's my suggestion.
I would be, I would be happy to take that back to the city council.
Okay. I think, you know, right now, it suggests there's a personnel problem, or there's, it suggests there's a CCAB problem.
I see what you're saying.
And I really think the primary thing has been a fiscal management problem. And I think by doing it that way...
Which still wouldn't change anything.
Would not change it.
I'm suggesting we should say, "The city managers have responsibility for the whole thing. They have to get a memo out saying..."
But the statement focuses on the problem we saw.
I think I could take that back to my council.
That's a suggestion, but I can't make any, I can't make any motions.
And I definitely...
We've got people to speak, so we'll come back here. Thank you. David Fraser. David Fraser.
Mayor, I just, you just clarified it for me because until that last exchange, I wasn't sure. What are we trying to accomplish? So, I withdraw my request.
Did you want to make a motion?
No. I have lots of questions.
Where are they?
I have lots of comments.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, Mr. Fraser, when you opened up, you said that if West Lynn pulls out, Oregon City, the station's going to dissolve. I'd like an explanation of that. How do you perceive that to happen?
The current IGA requires both cities to be active for it to be an IGA. If one party withdraws from the IGA, you don't have an IGA. You can still have Willamette Falls, but you'll, it won't be the same. It won't be as it is.
Nothing's ever the same. It always changes.
Okay. Well, half the funding, more than half the funding, comes from West Lynn, so it'll be a much different enterprise.
But it wouldn't dissolve. I mean, it wouldn't just drive and go away?
Yes, it would. It would absolutely dissolve if they're not...
So, the media center would be gone?
No, physically, no. The corporation would be dissolved.
The corporation?
That's right.
Thank you. Okay. I want to clarify a few more.
Sure, Dan, if I might, understand that in that process, there is a division of assets. And the division of assets also includes, you know, all the key components of the studio, the cameras, the computer gear, the, you know, the curtains, everything. So, in reality, what you have is a lease with the school district and an empty building.
So, and when we talked last time about this, you said that the staff would have an opportunity to respond to the findings that the auditor found. And the next day, there was a press release saying that the media center stole, I don't know, $40,000. What happened to giving staff an opportunity to respond?
Staff met with our, both representatives from my office and from West Lynn to go over the audit findings and produce these materials. We don't control what the press says. West Lynn...
So, there wasn't a press release?
There was a press release. You've got a copy.
That said that the $40,000 was missing?
No, it didn't say $40,000 was missing.
Okay.
$48,000 was unsubstantiated expenditures.
Audit report, if I might, the audit report said there were $48,000 in questionable expenditures.
Okay. Then, West Lynn and Oregon City has both said, "We've been trying to work with these people for over a year." I've sat in the audience for many of these meetings. Never once have I heard staff or anybody from West Lynn say, "We're having problems. Can somebody help us?" Was that ever given to this commission?
Well, sometimes I'm, my memory's faulty, but actually, I would say that's true. I never heard the mayor bring up issues with the functioning of the board or fiscal management issues associated with Willamette Falls in this body. But my memory is faulty.
I think that's a communication thing. Our staff should have been saying, "Hey, don't you guys know?"
Excuse me just a minute, though. Mayor Neely was in those meetings with me.
No, no, we're not. He's talking, no, no.
No, no, for the last year.
We're talking about in the previous commission. He made reference to two years of issues. And I do not know those were ever raised with the commission.
Yep. I also said, "Correct me if I'm wrong," because...
Well, I don't know, but I don't know what happened at West Lynn's council meeting. I'm just talking about...
I've just not ever heard that there's been a problem before. It would have been nice to have had staff kind of bring that to commission's attention. So, maybe it could have been addressed back then. Then it wouldn't be an issue right now.
No. Commissioner Smith?
So, I had the same sentence underlined, but, and I think your change helps, but I guess my concern is, we've heard from our city manager, "We don't want to, we don't want to run a TV station."
Yes.
We've essentially heard that from West Lynn. That's what this does.
Yes.
That's what it does.
And so, that bothers me because that's what we're doing, is putting us in charge of everything. It's us all aspects. I don't know why we've never had a joint work session with West Lynn in the entire time I've been here either.
Right.
And I know it's come up to, as a possibility to do that, to, and that probably would have resolved some of these problems before we even got to this point.
Right.
Now, we're kind of in a rush to fix it, and we have something like this that I don't think, I mean, it really concerns me because I haven't met with anyone from West Lynn. I mean, this is the first time I've heard anyone from West Lynn even talk about it. I know we've had meetings of staff and representatives from this commission, but not the commission as itself. And so, when you get to the last, when we get to the last sentence in the last paragraph where it says, "The MLC may delegate any of its responsibilities," so basically, you know, the MLC is responsible for every aspect of the station unless we decide that, you know, we're going to let you take care of some of these things. But we don't know what that is. I, so to me, this says, "We're going to run a, we're going to run a television station." I think that, you know, talking about how the board's made up should probably be a discussion and whether it's, I mean, I don't necessarily think that we, any of us want to sit on one more committee.
Yeah.
You know, so creating another South Fork may be not the best solution. Maybe if there's one representative from this commission that's, and citizen members from both cities, I don't know. But, you know, that's a discussion that should have taken place a lot sooner than now.
Long-term.
And I think that needs to happen. I mean, I would like, I know there's some urgency to this because we have to have a solution, but I would have liked to see the two commissions have a work session to discuss. This is what we really think the future is. I don't know what West Lynn sees the future of the television station. For all I know, West Lynn wants to shut it down. I don't know that personally. So, if we get into a position where we've turned the operations of every aspect of the station over to two cities and West Lynn says, "Ah, we have nothing to do with it anymore," what do we do? And I think this really needs to be a more extensive dialogue between the two cities. And maybe that can happen at the same time. I'm just not comfortable with this yet.
Uh-uh.
I mean, we essentially have two cities saying, "We don't want to run a television station," and that's what this does. It lets us run it.
I'm going to make one comment, just to simplify. I think the urgency of this memorandum of understanding is, we're about to pass our budgets.
Right.
And we want to have a document in place so when we, when our budgets come into effect, we supported it. I don't think this memorandum, what is this?
Resolution.
This resolution. I don't think this resolution precludes additional discussions and additional modifications. I think this is intended really to get us over our fiscal budget responsibilities and make sure that we have a functioning IGA. We don't want to, we don't want to have something in which we have one or the other partners pulling out of it and all the issues then occur, happen. And that's how I regard this document as being.
That's not what it says.
I disagree, yeah.
I mean, if we want to do that, then let's say that in here.
Yes.
Not say, "We're going to run a television station."
Yes.
May I...
Because that's not what this says.
May I respond to Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, go ahead.
The issue here is, in truth, is that we already run a television station, okay? We just don't have any say in how it's run.
Sounds like tri-city sewer.
Yep.
So, well...
This is the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Not doing it.
Yeah.
Well, and I might suggest that that's a bit like a major stockholder in a corporation complaining that his elected board isn't running the company the way he likes it run.
Yep.
The fact is, is that there is a board that's appointed by the... The fact is, is that there is a board that's appointed by the mayors of the two cities. There is a budget process. Our meetings are open and to the public. In fact, we had, we were just in the process of beginning to use the boardroom at the school district to have our meetings, so that they would be on the television station. What a concept that would be. But, again, I think Mr. Smith and Commissioner Mumm are right, that this doesn't solve the problem, and that more dialogue about how to run the station and how to get it to the point of, you know, how to implement those fiscal accounting functions and still maintain the board as operating the station is the way to go about it. And I think you can get there, I just think that the two, that the city council in West Lynn and the city commission of Oregon City need to work through that together, rather than having staff do it.
We have a resolution here that I presume if West Lynn maintains this resolution, does our IGA fall apart? If we don't pass it?
You have an ordinance which amends your previous ordinance with, which adopted the agreement.
That's what I heard.
And so, have to go through two readings. Any changes would have to be agreed to by West Lynn. There are many ways of dealing with this. And I guess what you have to weigh is, given the time you have, given the alternatives you have, what are you going to do?
But we don't have to pass this by our budget schedule.
No, no.
And if you don't pass it, the corporation doesn't automatically dissolve. So it's, if you don't pass it, then it's sort of, West Lynn, you know, I'm not sure what their reaction would be, but, and if you want to have a joint meeting, I mean, we can find out what their schedule is and come over and talk to them.
Can I mention one other thing? And that is, in the IGA, if you read the IGA, and I think part of the reason that we have this urgency is the fact that either city has a time period in which they can choose to, you know, reopen the IGA, or dissolve the IGA, or do whatever they want. And that timeframe was prior to December, or January 1st of 2011. And so if you don't choose to do this, then nothing can happen between the two cities until the end of fiscal year 2011. And the whole point of my discussions with the city managers and the assistant city managers six or eight weeks ago was that my mission was to find a different model for Willamette Falls Television, be it a nonprofit with long-term contracts with all of the cities, to make it more equitable, working with a couple of county commissioners to see if we could put together maybe a different kind of county-wide model, that there, you know, there are two or three different options. But we, the studio needs the time, and the board needs the time to research those and get the cities out of the television business. And if these rather draconian fiscal things happen in this time period, we won't have an operating studio to be able to do that, to have that time to be able to go and find a different model.
Well, I would respond to that by saying the IGA is so flawed that I would, speaking as an individual, certainly not as a council member, that I would guess that should the council choose to do something, we could. Because it is an incredibly flawed document. The other thing that I would say, as an individual, not speaking for the councillor, is I think it's a travesty when the city of Milwaukee's paying $40,000, and we're paying $100,000, and we're essentially getting the same service.
Well, and I think...
And we either have to establish some kind of control, okay? Or, you know, speaking as, again, as an individual, can't speak for the council. Speaking as an individual...
Why is that happening?
Hmm?
What is, do you know what the causes of that differential?
Because we put in our monies consistent with the IGA, with both sides going in equal, and correct me, David, or Mayor Neely, if you know differently. The city of Milwaukee negotia, or the, and this goes to the whole management issue. The CCAB negotiated, or the personnel negotiated a contract with the city of Milwaukee for essentially the same services at about half the cost.
Well, there's no doubt that they do need to be looked at. I just don't think it's an urgent thing that we have to deal with right now.
And if I might, to clarify the difference between what the cities of West Lynn and the cities of Oregon City do, is the IGA specifies a certain percentage of the actual franchise fees that are paid to the cities by Comcast or the other cable providers. In that, in the case of the current contract, I believe it is thirty-three percent?
Thirty.
So it's 32% of the total franchise fees that come to the city from each, from whoever the vendor is. And then, the other places that we serve, whether it be Wilsonville, or Happy Valley, or Damascus, or Milwaukee, they have negotiated contracts with the board. And I fully agree, and have, you know, we've already talked about this at earlier board meetings, that part of the problem was, is that we didn't have anybody experienced in business that was actually, you know, on the board or doing that stuff. So we needed to have time to figure out what our loaded labor rates were, how division of employees' time was, you know, in relation to the services provided to those cities, to figure out what a reasonable charge would be for those things. And realize, we're in, what's, this is the 1st of June, so I've been the chair for five months, and three of those months, I've been dealing with this thing right here. So I haven't been able to do the kinds of fiscal controls and the other things that needed to be done, to be able to answer the kinds of questions that you're talking about. I fully agree. We can find a way to make it more equitable for everybody involved, but we need to have time to do it. And I think this doesn't give us the time that we need.
Well, I believe, Melody, did you want to speak? Come on up.
Can you, can you please look at the screen?
So am I, but I don't mind. Anyway, David Fraser.
I just wanted to yield a bit of time to one of my staff who's worked on this for two years, longer than I have, anyway. Terry Bankhead has a little bit of information.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to a few comments that this has not been brought forward before. As the staff member who has worked on this for two years, with the former city manager, Larry Patterson, we have brought forth, I think at a few work sessions with the former commission, which three of you were part of, the conversations that we have been having with West Lynn about trying to develop an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, to get to this point where we have fiscal control. We went through nine versions, nine MOU versions with West Lynn and the CCAB, to the point where none of them were acceptable by the CCAB. And during those conversations of those MOU versions, we discussed what it would look like as a Southworth Water Board, you know, example. And quite honestly, that was rebuffed by the existing CCAB at the board at the time, as well as the manager.
The CCAB has got a different membership.
It does have a different membership now.
And...
And so we've worked for a few years on this, and we've come to a couple of work sessions with the previous council.
Melody? Go ahead. Ms. Ashford?
Hi, Melody Ashford, manager. I wanted to sit there quietly and not say anything, but when I hear contracts and so forth, and there's a misconception, all contracts are not created equal. Each one is very specific, as Dan had stated. Oregon City and West Lynn is a straight 32%. That's how it was negotiated originally, when Gladstone was involved. And the first contract that was negotiated by the CCAB, which was Milwaukee, I believe, its contract was based on what Gladstone was paying 32%. It was based on population and what Gladstone was paying. So at that time, even though the equity has changed, and we've talked about equity in contracts, and I fully agree that everything needs to be looked at, everything needs to be visited. We had a consultant at one time that was supposed to come in, where there's all this talk about doing that, so, I mean, I fully agree with all those things. But as far as the contracts, they are very different. Milwaukee, we manage their government channel, we have a videographer go out and tape two meetings a month, period. If they want any other meetings, they pay $300 a meeting over contract. They are able to access the Public Access Center as public employee, as public come in and use the facility. But we don't do outreach, much like we do Oregon City groundbreaking and so forth. Anything like that would be charged over contract. So it's very specific. Clackamas County, they pay basically $40,000 a year. What that gives them is merely access for the unincorporated public. We do not manage their channel. We do not go out and shoot anything for the county. That is merely for the unincorporated Clackamas public to come in, unincorporated Clackamas County public, to come in and use the facility. Again, it's a much different contract, so it's not like everybody's getting the same thing. City of Wilsonville, we shoot two meetings a month and schedule their channel, period. Anything over that is over contract. So it's not like, you know, again, I believe there's some equity issues, you know, that's a given, and it's how much you use the facility. Oregon City's actually had much more benefit from the facility than West Lynn. West Lynn has a right to say, "We're not getting our bang for our buck." We haven't had as good a communication as I would like to have with the city of West Lynn to be able to do these things for them. But, you know, you can only bring them to the buffet, and if they won't eat, they won't eat, you know? So it's one of those things that, it's there for use, and it is underutilized, and we want to work on that, we want to work on relationships, and we want to work on this being the best center, and bringing community together and not bringing community apart. So those contracts do need to be looked at, but they are very, very different.
What are the terms of these contracts? When do the various factors expire?
Annual.
They're annual?
Everyone is annual, and they're all up. And in fact, you know, Milwaukee, we're sitting on an annual, so it's, they're up for revision each year. So there's opportunity each year to renegotiate.
This is a calendar year or fiscal year?
Every fiscal year. Yeah, all the, just like your fiscally budgeted.
And Mayor, so I'm clear, the first speaker from Portland, who wasn't part of any service contract, or was, is that part of this?
He actually turns in a program, and his church is in our service area. He merely produces a program. He doesn't even use our equipment, but we air his, we air his program because his congregation is in our service area.
Oregon City service area?
It's in unincorporated Clackamas County. Is that correct?
Oh, we're actually in the Mobile County, but we have members in...
Church members are here, and that's the connection?
So what we have is, we have what's called sponsored programs. So if anybody, like, if you have a program from Indiana, and you want to see it here, if you have somebody that lives here in Oregon City, West Lynn, you know, all of our service areas, they can say, "I want to see this program in my area." So all you need is a resident to air programming. Does that clarify a little bit of it? So it's live, work, or go to school to participate.
Mr. Fowler?
Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Don't you just hate awkward? You know, and awkward usually comes around when not enough communication and information is shared ahead of time. And just listening, I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but just listening to it, the type of information, I just sat here and listened to Melanie, I learned more just then in the type of information that Dan was sharing just a minute ago about what could be with the various entities in the county. That's the type of information that I think of the two, if the Weston City Council and the New York City Commission got together in a work session and really listened to all the people that are running the station, greater understanding would take place. With greater understanding, and then a guiding principles of what you want to do and what you don't want to do, might in fact lead to a better agreement. So I hope that that could occur. I hope that what awkward is created, and again, no offense to the city council of West Lynn, but when you pass a resolution, and then expect the other city to pass it without an initial discussion at a work session, that creates awkward, because then if you don't go along with it, or make a suggested, just a couple-word changes, are they going to be offended by that and then take their, you know, ball and go home, won't play the game? So that creates awkward. And again, somebody has to, you know, start discussions, but I think the discussion should have been started, maybe saying, "We need to talk together and figure out what we need to do," and then create the right documentation. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I never stated that staff hadn't been working on this for the last two years. What I stated was, we've never had a work session between the two commissions, even though we've asked for it. That's what I've been saying. And it should have happened.
Okay.
And I know it was asked to have happened when Larry was here, but that's a whole nother issue.
Can I assume from that, you want a work session with West Lynn?
Yeah, I think so.
Because we'll get on that right away. I can promise.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know, we were trying to get to that point. You know, we were, from the staff level and from the managers' level, we were trying to work together on both sides of the river here to get to that point, to bring something to you to discuss.
Maybe we should have started at the point where we meet, and start talking, because then we know the questions that we have to answer.
So, I mean, we've been working on trying to have some kind of understanding of where do both cities want to go with it. We ended up having a work session with the CCAB a few months ago to talk about, what do you think about this as an MOU? And we just haven't been able to really get to that point to come together, I guess, so now's the time.
Well, I guess we get some direction at this point, anyway. David Fraser?
I didn't mean to push the button. I'm ready to do the work session as soon as we can get West Lynn.
Okay.
And I don't think you guys care which side of the river, do you?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm assuming there are no motions coming forward?
I'm assuming.
With that, thank you. That's a great dialogue.
It was great.
Too bad we didn't have this sometime before, but anyway. I guess emergencies are the kinds of things that drive things. Councilor Jones, thank you for coming.
Yes.
I, I hope we can take a bit more time, get us both together on this one. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I really appreciate the employees and the board members who have come, the users of the facility, to speak. Thank you very much. With that, we're going, we're not, I don't know if we're even a third of the way through our agenda, but we're going to 7D. And this is the second reading, this won't be too bad, actually. Second reading, I hope, forms 11-1005. Granting a television franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City. And I don't know if we've been through this with staff before. Ms. Greshaw, is there anything else you want to say about the second reading?
I believe that this would be Ms. Ives', agenda item.
Oh, that's the wrong Nancy.
Wrong Nancy.
I'm sorry.
Funny Nancy.
You do have a shorter last name, I should have picked up on that.
You're exactly right, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is the second reading of the franchise agreement with Level 3 Communications. The commission approved the first reading on April 20th, and staff is recommending approval of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Pam Berry of Berry Elsner and Hammond is here this evening, if you have any further questions on this matter.
Okay. Any questions, or does somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to attempt it, okay? I'm going to move that we adopt resolution number 1113.
No, no. It's move for second reading and final adoption of ordinance 11-1005.
What he said, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second.
The roll call, please.
No, I need to read it.
Oh, I do that every time. I'm worse than Alice Norris was.
This is ordinance 11-1005. An ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Level 3 Communications LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the city of Oregon City.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you for sitting for three hours through our meeting for that two-minute exercise.
They've got the next one, too.
Oh, they got the next.
Okay, eight minutes.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask a question here. This is introduced in our agenda here as a introduction for ordinance.
Yes.
We have a recommendation for first reading, but is that the intent, is to add a first reading?
Yes.
Okay. And, so you want to come forward? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. I am Pam Berry, from the office of your special legal counsel. We work with your city attorney to provide the city with telecommunications legal advice, since it's a highly specialized area. And I'm happy to say that I have a real softball for you tonight, because everybody who negotiated on this issue agrees to what is in front of you. There are no controversies, there's no awkward, I think, as Dan Fowler said. And so, but I would be, I think it'd probably be a good idea just to give you a brief overview, because this one is a little different than your typical franchise. I do know that a couple of the representatives who work for Electric Light Wave, or actually it's Integra Telecom, the holding company, are here tonight. They can verify that these are negotiated terms. The difference in this franchise agreement from what you're used to seeing is that it's a product of the new era of telecommunications competition. This company has a new contract, which I think will highly benefit the hospital. They need to get in our rights of way to provide the service. However, they don't want to be limited to just that standard franchise agreement. They may want to broaden their business plans, they may generate other consumer customers, they will lease access from Quest or others to gain customers in the city. So what we created in Section 3 of the ordinance is sort of a hybrid franchise fee, and that's really the unique thing here. It's a combination of 5% of gross revenues if they serve city customers with a per-linear-foot fee for the run-through town, such as the Level 3 franchise you just saw. So that's, that's really the unique part, and I just wanted to be sure that you understood that. This company may not just end up serving the hospital. And they've been very good to work with in terms of trying to negotiate a win-win solution so the fee is fair and reasonable, the city gets paid for its use, for their use of our rights of way, they're going to comply with all of our ordinances on construction, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. But we are recommending approval for first reading this evening.
I got a question for you. When I was in Ed Sullivan's land use class at Lewis and Clark, our seminar question was on a telecommunications problem. Did you provide him with that question?
Can I answer? Uh, yes, probably helped. And I actually took his, I've taken classes from Mr. Sullivan as well, we go way back, but possibly.
I want to compliment Commissioner Nocida. I couldn't possibly remem, well, maybe, it's not a compliment. The only, the only questions I remember ever asking, being asked, are the ones I got wrong. Now, how did you do?
He did fine.
Oh, no?
They don't pay him that much.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Now, tax, that story.
Okay, are we ready for a motion, then? Most of our first reading.
I move to approve a first, first reading of ordinance number 11-1007, granting a telecommunications franchise to Electric Light Wave LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the City of Oregon City.
Second.
Roll call, please.
You want to read it?
This is ordinance 11-1007, ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Electric Light Wave LLC to occupy certain rights of way within the City of Oregon City.
And Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
I'm going to request that the city recorder give me a highlighted version for all ordinances with a comment there, "Reading first." She, you know, she helps me on a lot of stuff. She gives, she gives me all kinds of scripts I can work with and so forth. Really appreciate your work.
How many years did this start up here? Wow, something like.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I was never mayor.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Now, now we've gone through number seven, but now we're going to go back to number six.
Well, it's been an hour and a half since our last break, I'd like to.
That's okay. I want to point out to those people that think we're going a long time, during Dan Fowler's period of time, we would go to 2:00 AM, and no problem.
No problem.
We did it without a break!
No breaks, either.
Yeah, so a 10-minute break, we'll, we'll come together at 10 o'clock.
Multi-year was my favorite.
Budget and, and logging of taxes for fiscal year 2011, 2012, a minor issue. I guess I go to Mr. Winner.
Good morning. My name is David Winner. I live in Oregon City, and numbers are my friends.
Still got two hours.
Anyway, what you have before you is the resolution adopting the budget. As you recall, on April 18th, the Budget Committee met, and it was a unanimous decision, 10 to nothing, to approve the budget with one change, which was to add $100,000 to furniture repairs from general fund contingency. And then the next week, when Urban Renewal met, there were a couple items that affected the city budget. One was a $40,866 reduction in support for the Economic Development Coordinator, so that actually reduced the general fund revenue and contingency. Then there was also a $48,000 item for the transfer to the city for the downtown street sweeper vehicle, so that reduced the fleet replacement fund by 48,000, both revenue and expenditures. So those two reduced the budget that was approved by 88,866. And in the meantime, I was, we saw the deal with the Secretary of State yesterday, a lot of that had to do with transfers and way of our budgeting, so I've made some major changes on the way we budget transfers in that we used to call, there's probably about 250 to 280 line items that are transfers or reimbursement of expenditures, and some of them we call transfers when, or materials and services when they really are transfers. So some of the things I've done here is to clean that up and make it more consistent with really what the substance of the transaction is. And there are, in addition to those two items I just mentioned, there were five items that totaled $33,000 of reduction in the overall budget for churning up some transfers between funds. When we have these 250 line items, we've got 10 or 15 people over here saying, "I'm going to transfer this money to you," and somebody says, "I'm going to get this much from you," and they don't always agree, and I always catch them because there's so many of them at the time. So anyway, I think I've caught those. And the last item was, had to do with the way we're budgeting transfers, and there are like 19 reclassifications of things of, we're not changing the light item, we're just calling it a transfer instead of being a material and service, and that affects like, you said, like 19 funds. So after all that is done, I've reduced the budget by 121,866 dollars from what the approved budget was, and that leaves a budget of 88,001,0672.
Well, we may want to help, but why don't I say 88,000?
You had a lot of trouble.
Good morning. This is one of the decimal things. So anyway, it's 88 million dollars, which would be 126,000 less than what was approved. And when you, if you want to really be nerdy, you can look back at the resolution, and you'll see that transfers show up more in more funds than they did before. There's like 10, 10 new funds that have transfers that were, where it was called materials and services before. So, anyway, that was the only change, and still $4.1590 is still the tax rate, and the levy for the fire bond debt service is still 268,873.
And our, our motion is for the total adopted budget, the tax rate, and what else?
Uh, well, the bond, the fire bond levy?
Fire bond levy.
Debt service.
So the specific, if we're going to do the motion at this point, it would be for the total amount of, of the budget, which is 88,000, 88 million, $10,672, a tax rate of 4.159 dollars per thousand, and a bond amount of 288,873.
68, 268, 873.
No, 268, 873. Put it up, 80%, so 75%. Yeah, there it is. Do we want some discussion on the budget?
Well, you said all that, I just want to go, so moved.
A public hearing, yes, so people are welcome to come forward, people in the annex, if they want to come forward, or people here want to come forward. Open the public hearing? We do have, actually, we do have, we do have a on-the-floor, Carter Stein wants something read into the record, and he's left, so if Nancy Ives, would you please do so?
Yes, this is from Carter Stein. He's the Chair of the Planning Commission, and he asked me to, he had to leave, he asked me to read this into the record. At our last meeting, the Planning Commission engaged in a discussion of setting goals for 2011. We reviewed our duties as described in the city code, the city commission's 2011 goals, and the accomplishments from our 2010 goals. We discussed the need to work on a South End concept plan, potential work on Beaver Creek implementation code, and other efforts. We talked about the opportunity to the city that the Blue Heron closure provides. Although our discussion needs to continue, there was a strong majority consensus to engage in public education and outreach and to conduct economic surveys. We were in strong agreement that we strongly encourage a citywide comprehensive visioning process to help assess community values and needs, especially in light of new opportunities. I recommend you view the meeting video to hear the entire discussion. Again, Carter Stein, Chair of the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Nocida.
Okay, a couple of things. I'm, I'm not prepared to vote on the budget tonight for a couple reasons. One, we changed the schedule around, we had a very full house at the beginning of this meeting tonight. I don't know how many of those people came for this public hearing, and then just because of what a marathon it became, just, just gave up and left. So I'd rather continue the public hearing to our next meeting and, and keep it at the front of the agenda, so that if people tonight came to make public comment and just got overwhelmed by what happened with Park Place and switching the agenda, they can have an opportunity to speak. Secondly, I do want to point out, too, that Commissioner Roth, just recovered from surgery, wasn't able to stay tonight, and on a vote as important as the, the city budget, I really think the whole commission should be present for that vote. I understand the mayor will not be present, but you will be here by speakerphone, by telephone, so we will have a full commission. The third thing, I do want to discuss this question of visioning in two respects. I do want to have a discussion, maybe at next week's work session, about, because it's come from a lot of quarters, we heard it from Mr. Stein, we heard it from Ms. McGriff, and we've, she's brought the idea to three different of our citizens' bodies. We had a comment this, this evening about doing visioning. We have budgeted it for the Urban Renewal Commission. There was a concern expressed that, you know, we not leave the rest of the city out, and I heard some, you know, expressions of agreement and saw some head nods on that, on this commission. And I think it would be a good idea to incorporate that into this process, perhaps with a work session next week, to consider amending our city commission goals to include that as a milestone within Goal Six, no, Goal Five, citizen participation, and then working out some, some, as we do on OCCIT and Metro Enhancement, doing some budget refinement to provide funding for that before we adopt the budget on the 15th.
Commissioner Smith.
I was just going to say, I don't have a problem holding it over, but, and then I was looking at this piece of paper, and we go through so many acronyms, I've never seen BARF before. I've never noticed it. Budget Adjustment Request Form, a BARF. You look for any bits of humor as you go through the night, and that, that stood out to me, so.
When I was at Washington County, one of the best finance directors I ever worked for, we designed that form over there. Washington County is one of the best governments in Oregon, and I thought, "If that was good enough for them, I could use it, too."
Commissioner Mumm.
Wait, you skipped some.
Oh, you want to wait until the other Commissioner?
Sure.
Just in case she has something you want to comment about.
Sure.
I would like to say that being on the phone, it's very hard to hear everybody, so I would strongly recommend that if you want to hold this over for public comment, that you do that, but don't try and adopt the budget being over the phone.
We have to. We have to adopt the budget the next year.
Or then, if we don't.
It has to be done before July 1st.
Oh.
I think the mayor can hack it.
Well, then, please, everybody speak up, because I'll be also on the phone, because I won't be in town either.
Oh, okay.
Since that was my fishing trip, I would rather not cancel that. Can I be on the phone, too?
Mr. Mumm will be on the phone.
Is there service where you're going to be?
I'm sure there was, up in the hills, I can get a regular phone.
I just think that.
Could I make, make a suggestion? Make it simple. The only thing we're required to do is the total budget, the rate, and the bonded requirement there. And we could come back at the next meeting and discuss if there's particular line item adjustments that you wish to make. We don't really even have to make them at the next meeting, we can make them at a subsequent meeting.
In July.
The, I mean, the things that we have to pass are those three things, and there's probably no issue on that, because unless we want to reduce the tax rate, or increase it, or something like that, which I think we don't want to do, we could actually pass this resolution and then have the work session and actually perhaps focus on a couple of line items adjustments in the, once we get into the next fiscal year.
Well, another comment was, you know, we've already loaded down staff quite a bit with all of our goals, so we might have to look at taking something off of the goal list if we're going to add a visioning plan, because I know that's pretty time-consuming.
Yeah. It isn't on our goals, however, with issues for, we don't know how that's going to go, but in terms of Blue Heron, with actually trying to get the Beaver Creek Concept Plan moving forward and so forth, I think there's a real benefit to actually modifying our goals to deal with that, but that can be part of the discussion.
Okay.
So when I'm ready to talk, when are you?
Yep.
Say to, okay. Well, I, I share the sentiment that certainly you can adjust your priorities and your goals anytime in the year. So it's somewhat non-typical, but, I mean, it does happen, because things like Blue Heron come along, and the dynamics there are in flux regularly, and they change, and they're dynamic, and they're significant. So there may be a need to do that from time to time. Even if you, I guess here's how I want to put this, even if you adopt your budget tonight, you can still amend your goals a month from now. Staff cannot possibly do all those goals, many of which are two years, in the next 30 days and spend all the money you're appropriating.
Right.
Nor would we, even if we could do that, because we have to make this last 12 months, minimum. So you can go ahead and adopt your budget if you're worried about process, and I want to say, and then we can, of course, if you amend your, my preference would be, if you're going to amend your goals, that you amend the goals first, and then say to me and the staff, "Okay, we want this to be our priority." For example, we, let's say you decide you want a community-wide visioning, or a visioning for Blue Heron, or you want both or something, then give me a chance to sit down with our staff and say, "What do we need to take off of the current workload to accomplish that in a, in a positive way?" Because I don't want to just add things and pretend we can do it, and then it comes out not a very good product. So I want to be realistic about our capacity. And come back to you and recommend, well, maybe if we, if we take these things out, or we delay some of the one-year goals to a two-year timeframe, I'd like to be able to work with the staff through that process, so it doesn't, because we're pretty maxed right now. And we'll need to find offsetting expenditures for what that is. We also probably want to get some estimates for what we, I have some ballpark ideas of what it's going to cost to do that visioning. It will depend on whether it's a community-wide or targeted to a special area, because that will affect the price. And that'll also affect the amount of staff time that's involved. So if you let us study that, just like you did with your goals, you know, when you did your goals, we had some suggestions, you guys made suggestions to us, then I had almost three months to put together a budget that targets that, which is in front of you tonight. So when you, if you change your priority, just please give us a little time to go back there and say, "Okay, here's how we can make that work, and by the way, here's the things we're recommending to you that you either delay or eliminate in exchange for these additional work items." So are you, is that, is that clear?
So we can go ahead and adopt?
You can adopt tonight and then amend your goals.
Okay.
And if you, you know, if you have some general information you want to share with us about something you'd like to forego, or us about something you'd like to forego or something like that, we have sufficient contingency, Dave, I think, to make up for what we think this would cost. But I would still, even though we can use that contingency, I'd like to go back and look at the work plan, because that's the work we have to do. Even if we have the money to pull all this off, we don't have the staff capacity. So I want a chance to look at that, if you're able to indulge me.
Yes.
I still not prepared to vote tonight for the other reasons I mentioned, the public hearing and the full commission.
Well, they did have an opportunity to sign up, didn't they, Nancy? So did anybody sign up to speak on the budget?
I stayed to hear the side, and people could stay if they wanted.
Yep.
Only one person, Carter Smith.
Yeah.
Or Carter Stein, excuse me.
Yeah, sure.
And this is for Mr. Wimmer.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. I have to be online. So, Mr. Wimmer, if the budget were adopted tonight, what is the, what is the technical limit? Seems to me, the number 10% is sticking in my head, that you have to change the budget by more than 10% before you have to reopen the budget hearings. Is that correct?
No, they've changed the budget law quite a bit.
Okay.
I mean, it used to be that way.
All right.
Now you do supplemental budget, which the next item on here is exactly that. If it's over 10, if you increase the total fund by over 10%, so, like in general fund, we have $18 million budgets, it'd be an increase of $800,000. But--
Costs that much.
We're not, we're not talking about anywhere near those kind of changes.
So there's no real harm in adopting the budget tonight, letting you go on your fishing trip, letting these folks go do the things that they're gonna go do, and you still can come back as a body and make the changes that you want if the votes are there to do it?
I move to approve Resolution Number 11-15, adjusting the 2010-2011 budget appropriations.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mumm. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
No.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
The next agenda is the change budget amendments for the current budget here, and I'll get the title there in a minute. But, no, David, Mr. Wimmer can go ahead.
On the last one, in your motion, you got all three pieces in there, I presume.
It's the adoption of the resolution.
Making appropriations for the $88 million--
Well, that's right. We have to--
That's right.
So we have to make those specific statements in the motion.
Well, actually, it's in the resolution. If you adopt the resolution, you create statements.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, so it's covered.
Is that the understanding that--
Yes.
Yes.
Those three items. Okay, very good.
Okay. The next item is Resolution 11-3, which is supplemental budget for 2010-11. This is exactly what Mr. Holliday was mentioning, but this was ironic. These are very small numbers, but they fall within the parameters. So the first item is to, we're establishing the EID Fund, which we have it in the next year's budget, but since we sent out the bills in May, we're already receiving money, so we're making a home for that, for $60,000, even though we won't get that, and we won't be spending anything. And the second item is Parks and, it's the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Trustee Fund. Yeah, fund numbers, right. There's been quite a few more Meals on Wheels donations and expenditures and just donations for, well, the Pioneer Community Center. But unfortunately, this fund was $132,000, and we're increasing it by $29,000 as all, but that's 21%, so it requires this extra formal process with notices and stuff, so that's why this is a supplemental budget.
And what we need to do on this is deal with the total? Is that sufficient? Or we--
To adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, okay.
And it should say Parks Trust and--
Trustee.
Right.
Did I read the right?
You mean, sort of--
They have SDC.
Yeah, it says SDCs in it.
It's the right fund number, it's just the right wrong name.
The motion would be to adopt the resolution as corrected.
Yes.
So moved.
Do you have a public hearing on that, too? Do we have a public hearing on that?
Yes.
Yes? So we, well, we're, the motion hasn't been seconded, so it's not a problem. We'll open the public hearing. See, no one that wishes to speak. We'll close the public hearing, and now do a hearing motion.
I move to adopt our--
As corrected.
As per.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
No.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
I just, I was kinda curious, Commissioner Nocida, why you know on this one.
Same thing. Same thing.
Oh, okay.
I didn't just--
No, okay. With that, we're going to, I believe, oh, no, we've got one more. We got one more. Excuse me.
This is Resolution 11-14, which is one of the sort of silly formalities we have to do. A few weeks ago, we had to do a resolution saying, telling the state that we provide sex rate services, and so we're eligible to receive state money, like cigarette tax, gas tax, liquor tax, state revenue sharing. Now, we have to do this public hearing to say we want to receive it.
Open the public hearing, anybody that doesn't want to receive the money. No, I hear nobody asking seriously to come up. Close the public hearing, do our motion.
Move to approve Resolution Number 11-14, to receive state revenue sharing money for fiscal year 2011-2012.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mumm. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Mumm?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
I'd be damned, thank you. With that, I think that takes us down--
Consent.
--to consent agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing then, we'll go ahead into the City Manager Report, I believe.
Thank you, Your Honor. Irma Tinker House last week was officially recognized by the Historic Preservation League of Oregon as one of the top 10 among Oregon's most endangered places. Also happens to be the oldest, I think, on the top 10 list. And that's very timely, given our recent enthusiastic push for greater cooperation from state and federal sources on doing something with Irma Tinker, so I'm pleased with that. Tomorrow, I'm, not tomorrow, but Friday, I'm going on a tour with a group called Heritage Waters. I think some of you guys know some of the people involved in that, but I'm not sure I know all of them, but it's a group of folks concerned about natural resources in Oregon City, so I'm looking forward to that trip. And also wanted to mention that we have some upcoming events coming up in the library. Did you want to mention anything on that?
Yeah.
She stayed all, she stayed for many hours to say something.
I know, really, right? So I just wanted to let you know about some things going on in the library. Summer reading program sign-up started today. Tomorrow night, the Teen Advisory Board will collaborate with the Oregon City High School to provide the, present the Oregon's debut of the Oregon City High School Literary Magazine, which was, I think that's really cool that they're doing it together at the library. You won't want to miss Swinging with Dean next Thursday night, which was our last music event of the season before the concerts in the parks start up, and we'll let them be the music event. And then another really cool collaboration we're doing is with the Farmer's Market, Clackamas County, and the Regional Green Building Hotline. We're gonna co-sponsor a Green Fair Day at the Farmer's Market on June 11th. So we'll have vendors and giveaways and all kinds of stuff that relate to green stuff. And then next Monday, we are going to start New Hours, and we're very excited about that, because we're gonna start opening earlier. And this is gonna be a big boost to a lot of people, but particularly mothers with small children, who have been wanting us to open earlier for a long time. So Monday through Saturday, we're gonna be open at 10:00. Monday through Wednesday night, we'll close at 7:00. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we'll close at 6:00, and then Sunday is 12 to 5:00. And this will change the storytimes back to 10:15, which is gonna be really nice. So on Tuesday, for the summer, it's gonna be preschool plus, which is 3 to 8:00. On Tuesdays at 10:15. Yep, write that down, Jim. I saw you grabbing your pen. And on Thursdays, toddler under, under 3 at 10:15. So just wanted to get a plug in for those events. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around.
It's just a nervous technique.
And Director Conko had something to mention on the Natural Resources Committee effort.
Just wanted to let the commission know that we are gonna be sending out a notice to start filling those positions. So we're envisioning probably by the end of this week, that'll be posted, we'll get the notification out as broadly as we can, post it in the paper. We'll probably allow about 30 days for applications to be submitted before we bring those back to the mayor for appointment. We'll also be working off of the goals and objectives that the commission adopted and putting together the scope of work as an outline for the Natural Resource Committee, as well as other programs that we could, that we would see falling within or under their purview.
Tony, are you gonna be the staff liaison to that committee?
Probably Pete Walter, but I'll be in contact with him, yeah. One point of clarification was, we did have bringing back the Natural Resource Committee as a, as a potential work session item with the commission. I feel I've got quite a bit of direction from the commission based on the goals and policies, street trees that we've seen. We've identified Tree City USA as probably appropriate under Natural Resource Committee. So I wasn't, just looking for clarification, if you felt you still needed a work session on the Natural Resource Committee, or how you'd like to proceed on that?
No. I'll be advising, it's a, it's a, it's a committee that's formed on its own basis, but it is a, what do we call, the COV, what?
COVID.
The Habitat Task Force.
Habitat Task Force.
Yeah. Several people have been meeting, and it's one of the, one of the places that we put high on our, our list. I'll be letting those membership, those people know so they can apply for membership as well. And it's been a very active group, and I think Scott Archer has been communicating with some of those individuals and so forth as well. So that's one of the other things that was kind of higher on our priority list as well.
Okay.
Was that already placed on a work session, or?
No, it was, it was brought up, but I think we did the goal setting, and there was quite a bit of discussion about that. I wasn't sure if we needed to come back to revisit that or not, or if, I think I've got quite a bit of direction on how to proceed.
I agree.
And I think we've got a lot of work to do.
Once it's seated, you know, give us a report.
I'm sorry?
Once it's seated and up and running, give us a report. I don't think we need a--
A work session on it at this time.
I, I don't know how the designation of people that are going to be on it is going to be, but from my standpoint, there'll be, people can be, provide some very helpful input that would not reside in the city. So I don't know if the intention of putting them forward this would be strictly city residents.
Well, we took it straight from Oregon City Municipal Code Section 2.56, which is the Natural Resource Committee, and it identified that five of the seven members needed to reside, work in, own property or own a business within the city limits, two could be at large.
Okay. And that'll be, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one other thing that came up as well. I dispersed to the commission that our Kneema representative for the Historic Review Board had resigned. So that notice will also be going out at the end of the week. What we intend to do is we're putting together a flyer as well as the application material, and we're gonna mail it to all the property owners within the Kneema Historic District, as well as the disclosure concerning the state financial disclosure requirements, so that hopefully we can avoid moving forward some of the complications that we've had with previous members.
Thank you, Tony.
I have nothing further, except I did notice that there are people here from Main Street Oregon City that have been here for five hours, and I'm not sure if they had a chance--
They indicated if they needed to come in, they would.
Okay.
Yeah, come on. I wanted to, before you were done, let him speak, but I don't know if he wants to say anything about the--
I'm Rob Crocker, business owner and building owner in Oregon City. I just wanted to get some clarification. The budget was approved, which is great, but I wanted to make sure, it sounded like you guys were saying that you could approve the budget, but then go back in and still swap things around and horse trade and stuff. Is that what I was hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, in that budget is funds allocated for Main Street Oregon City, and Main Street Oregon City hasn't done any fundraising in the last six months, because we've been focused on the EID, and that's how, it was a self-assessment by property owners to make sure that Main Street had funds to operate. Well, we don't have any of those EID funds yet, even though they're in the account, and we're running really, really dangerously close to not being able to operate anymore, because we're not getting those funds. So I'm very concerned that if you're passing the budget, but then you're gonna say you're gonna come back in a couple of weeks and start monkeying around with things, that Main Street Oregon City's gonna have to wait longer, and before we know it, we're not gonna have any money, Main Street Oregon City's not gonna exist. We've done all this work for months, for over two years now.
What funds are you referring to, though?
The EID funds, the self-assessment fees for the, for the property owners.
Yeah.
We're not getting access to those. And then there's also in the city budget, there's, there's marketing funds for the Blue Collar Creative Campaign, which is a business development--
But that's not operating funds from Main Street.
No, it's not. But the Blue Collar, no, that's not, that's not operating funds. But, but the Blue Collar Creative is also in that budget, which we came to talk about and support. But our concern is that if you approve it, and then you decide, either July 1st, or July 15th, or August 15th, or whatever, you decide to reconnoiter things, and we don't know that you're gonna talk about reconnoitering things, how are we to know, do we need to show up at every meeting to know, to just guess as to whether or not you guys are gonna change things around?
I'll just say that, that is one of the reasons I didn't want to adopt the budget tonight, because I didn't want to have that decision made and then come back and shuffle things around. I wanted to wait, have a work session, and then, you know, have a budget that was adopted, be the final budget.
It's done now, and that's fine. I just wanted to, I just, as a, as a concern, you know, downtown business property owner and a Main Street member, I just want to make sure that that, that's gonna be in the budget, and that we are gonna soon get access to those EID funds, because that's not happening, and that's, that's causing grave concern for the organization, which I might add is probably the model and most successful Main Street in all of Oregon, established in the last decade, if not longer, and probably one of the most successful Main Streets in all the West Coast, maybe even the United States in the last two years. This is amazing, we've made some amazing progress, and for this to, to, to falter, because we don't, we can't get access to the funds that have already been appropriated for us that are sitting in an account, is just, it's mind-boggling to me. So I'm really concerned about that, and I don't know if you guys are aware that we're not able to get access to those funds, but the property owners in Oregon City who moved forward this EID, they were expecting, once they paid that, it was going to Main Street. And so we quit giving monthly donations to the handful of property owners that were making those monthly contributions. We quit doing it because we knew it was gonna be through the EID. Now we can't get it, and we're really stuck. I mean, this was passed in February, and we were expecting those funds shortly thereafter, certainly by, by the end of May, and we don't have them yet, and that's--
I'm glad you brought that up. We, we were contemplating drafting an MOU between Main Street Oregon City and my office to facilitate, for our auditor's sake, the transition of the funds from the EID account. And at the last meeting then, there was a suggestion that they comply with open records law, and that required the city attorney to get involved, and a one-page agreement is now about five or six, I think. And so their board is talking about how they can do that, and I just wanted you to be aware that that does add another layer of complexity to the agreement, and I'm, I'm pretty sure we can get something, but what I really want to know from you is, do you want me to administer that, work with Ed and Main Street and draft it, or do you want that on one of your agendas to come back to you? Because I'm viewing this as what we would do with any other contractor, which isn't to me that complicated. You do have a successful program. So do you want me to do that, or do you want to approve that agreement, review it?
The problem is, if it, if it has to go back and forth and review this stuff--
Right.
Main Street won't exist. It's gonna disappear. We're gonna, we're running out of funds.
Can we, let me ask a simple question. Can we authorize, I mean, I don't know how long to get through these line-by-line items, but can we authorize you to essentially loan funds that are gonna be paid back by the EID to facilitate that?
No. No. We don't have, I mean, you could authorize me in a separate resolution, but that's not going to help their schedule.
Well, they, they say they're out of funds now. This is simply.
I still need to know, though, whether you want to entrust me to negotiate that agreement and approve it, or if you want me to bring it back.
No, absolutely. You should do it.
It's an, we, it's already been approved. It's, all the property owners are paying into that for us. I don't see why this is such a complicated.
Why is it tied together? I guess I'm kind of confused about that.
Well, I don't know that the $50,000 that is a different budget item is part of the EID. You've adopted an ordinance directing the formation of this EID and for me to administer it.
Sure.
What I, and I'm prepared to do that. I think I have the authority to do that without bringing it back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
But what I don't want is heartburn later
No.
from somebody forgetting that I'm going to go forward and do this unless you tell me not to. If you want me to bring it back to you, I will. Otherwise, I'm going to make this agreement happen so they can get their
Well, absolutely.
EID money.
That's right. But my question is if the money, if some property owners aren't paying in quickly.
We've already got, we're, we're okay there, as long as I can.
Enough funds in there now to keep us going for the next few months.
Oh, okay.
Now, if I can transition a minute to the $50,000. At your last meeting, I think some of you had real questions about the, the details of the various expenditures from Main Street, and Mr. Purdy did not have that with him, but I do believe he has it. And did, did that get mailed to you guys? Have you checked your email today about that?
It's on the email, but I don't think it.
It didn't have?
Didn't answer the question.
Okay. So if you have additional questions about that, please let them know so they can get you more backup and information, because I'm sure that, that both the Commission and Main Street would like to have some resolution on that $50,000, one way or the other, so that it, they're, they're not, everybody's not in limbo. So.
That's, that's, that's not operating budget. That's not a huge deal. If you guys truly feel that an investment of $50,000, leveraging the hundreds of volunteer hours and hundreds of in-kind services is worth the investment, okay, that's fine. But the operating money, which is the EID, that needs to be taken care of. And I'm glad to hear you guys saying, let, let Mr. Frazier take care of it, because that's critical. We need that. So I'm happy to hear that.
Hold on. Don't want to throw wrench in this, but you were mentioning, David, a connection between the EID and the public records issue.
Well, well, that was brought up at the last meeting as one of the, a new wrinkle that we had to work through. Yeah.
But, but you're saying you've addressed that, and it's in the agreement now?
Well, we're negotiating an agreement with them. There's been a couple of drafts back and forth. I haven't looked at the final one because it's not final yet. Staff is still working on that with both Main Street. I believe Dan and Lloyd and Ed have principally been working on that together at this point.
Okay.
And so I'm trying to.
Your question was, do you want to bring that for our review and approval, or just authorized you execute that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, if you bring it back for authorization, it could kill Main Street. That's all I'm saying. Just, I mean, we shouldn't be treated any different than any other contractor. You don't treat us different than the Pioneer Service Center, or Meals on Wheels, or anything else. I don't, I don't see why this is such a big deal. I mean, the property owners paid into this, they agreed. It's a self-assessment, a self-fee for Main Street, because Main Street has proven what they can, what, what they have done, and, and you're, it seems like roadblocks are being thrown up and red tape is being.
Hold on. I just want to mention something. None of these funds would be available to the beginning of the fiscal year anyway. Is that, is that how the budget works?
Well, yeah, we just set us up now a budget making room for, that was like, $60,000 towards.
We've already begun collecting funds, so they technically could be available before the first of the year.
Okay. Okay. If.
They can write a check.
Or before the June, June for fiscal year, first of fiscal.
All right. Let's do it this way. Can you send, when you get the draft done, can you just shoot it to us by email, and then if any commissioner has concerns before it's actually executed, we can just give you a call?
Then what? You've got to be real careful about that. Any commissioner, you know that. You don't want to have that daisy chain voting thing out there.
I think that you're very capable of handling that.
Well, let me, let me clarify one thing. I think that a lot of the kinds of record-keeping, I mean, I've heard this argument that we're just like any other contractor, and not every other contractor has to comply with all these open records requirements.
Right.
How important is that to you, that they do that? Is that a deal breaker? Is that, I mean, it might be for some, but I don't know how you all feel as a group about that.
I feel very strongly about it. You know, I, I, you know, I appreciate the, the fact that this, you guys are working on this. I, I, I'm not sure I'm convinced, Rob, to be honest, that if, if we wait like till the next city commission meeting to take a look at this, that Main Street is going to disappear. Two weeks.
I don't think they can make payroll.
They can't, we can't make payroll, Commissioner Nocita. So, there you go. If we lose our Main Street manager, who is arguably probably the best Main Street manager in the country, it's done. Main Street is done. Main Street is done. And it's going to be on you guys, frankly, if you hold this up in red tape. Dude, this is not that hard of a decision. If you want to put in the contract, that you want to audit how the money's spent, we're fine with that. We have no problem with that. We want to show you how the money's being spent. But do not tie it up in all this red tape. I mean, this is ridiculous.
If, well, let's see if we can get through this. If you do, if we do authorize you to agree to this with the provisions about the Public Records Act, and, and you do, and everybody signs it, and then we see it, and there's, there's an issue with it, can, can it be amended, or once it's signed?
I can send a draft, but my concern is, I'm going to send a draft, and one or two of you are going to have a concern, and the rest of you won't, and I won't have, I'll have ambiguous direction at best. And so I think you have to almost decide, what are the parameters of negotiation that I'm authorized to go do? Because if I treat it just like any other contractor, we probably wouldn't have a requirement for open records compliance.
So then why are we not doing that?
Well, you have to decide amongst yourselves if that's a consensus that you have. And I'm not saying it's a deal breaker. I mean, we might, they might agree to.
I'm just going to ask for attorney, what are your concerns?
What I got originally was a memorandum of understanding that was specifically non-binding. And in trying to do the work for you, I insisted on putting in financial controls. They don't have any problem with the financial controls. I picked up that there was a feeling on the Commission that public records and public meetings law would apply. The draft that I did included that. If you don't want it, you don't have to put it in. So.
But the draft that you have includes it now?
I put it in, in the draft that I shared with Main Street, Oregon City.
Okay. Is there any objection?
There is, and here's why. There is, and here's why. If we want to get together, three board members, and we want to get together, together and talk about the color of the flyer that's going to go up for the Cruisin' Car Show, if that's considered a quorum, and we have to send out a notice, a public meeting notice, three days in advance and say, we're going to have a public meeting to talk, because we're, we're hold to these public meetings rec, records and laws, I mean, that's, that's going to, we have volunteers. It's in all volunteer staff except for one paid employee.
Yeah.
Volunteers are not going to put up with that. Not only that, but the public records laws, it's a book over 400 pages. So if, if you really want us to be concerned about that, then what we're going to need from you probably is, we're going to need more funds from the city, so we can hire an attorney to make sure we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be, and we're going to need probably a recorder. So we're going to need some more money from you guys. We can have a recorder to make sure we're doing everything by, by the book. Okay? So all of a sudden, you're adding this entire layer of complexity, which makes Main Street so awesome, because it doesn't have that. It's able to act nimbly and do amazing work, and we've proven it. Now, all of a sudden, if you, if you make us accountable to these public meeting laws, you're, you're throwing all that out the window. You're adding tons of undue burden on us. If you guys want to, want to up the ante, and you want to pitch in another quarter million dollars to hire an attorney and hire a, a recorder, and to, to make sure that we're, we're doing everything by the book, that's fine. But otherwise, man, for us to be required to send out meeting notices three days in advance to talk about a marketing campaign, or a, or a business recruitment campaign, or how we're going to, I mean, that's, it's just, it's silly. It's silly. There's no other Main Street in Oregon City that's, that's like, that's held to those standards. And I don't think there's any Main Street that we know of in the country that's held to those standards.
Well, given the fact that Sandy's Main Street manager is a city employee, I think there is at least one other.
But see, that's a different, that's a different avenue.
We're a private corporation, a private corporation, nonprofit. And we're happy to share any of the financial, I mean, any money that comes through the city, and it's not from the city, it's through the city, because it's from the property owners, it's a self-assessment. But any money that comes through there, we're happy to share how that money's spent. We have no problems with that at all. We just don't want to be overburdened by, by this public, public records law. That's the only thing we don't want. So if we can, if we can negotiate with, with Mr. Frazier and Sullivan on, we're happy to share our finances, we're happy to do a number of the other things, we just don't want to be overburdened with all this rigmarole and red tape. That's all that we're asking for.
Well, the financial piece is important.
Yeah. And that's, that should be what you're most concerned about.
I totally agree that you can work with those two on that. And I'm, I'm not held to the public record.
Well, that's one to one.
Yes.
Okay, let me.
What's the, what are the other two folks?
I mean, I'm, I'm, the draft you had without the public records requirement is fine by me.
Keep taking it out.
Taking it out.
Okay.
And public meetings as well.
They're open to the public anyways, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. So the public meetings thing could be in there. Yeah.
Now, okay, so let me clarify. Public meetings, is that where we have to send out an advance notice, three days in advance, if we want to talk about?
Normally for a regular meeting.
Yes. Yes.
So, so that, again, that comes down to the, if we want to get together to talk about a marketing campaign,
Yeah.
and we have to send out a public notice to everyone in the city, three days in advance?
You don't have to send it to everybody in the city.
What, what do we have to do?
You have to give it to the news media.
Okay.
You have to give it to.
To the who?
The news media.
Yeah.
Like the city recorder.
I'm, I'm, frankly, I'm at a loss. I mean, most successful Main Street in, in the country, and it's a self-assessment from the property owners. I'm, I'm at a loss. I really am.
Are we, are we trying to, are, is there something broken and we need to fix?
No.
Right.
Yeah. I think we can leave them both out from my standpoint.
But I haven't heard from Commissioner Smith.
I agree.
Okay. And, and just in fairness, first of all, I, I appreciate what Jim's point is. Also think that Rob makes a really good point. And when I was sitting here, I was thinking, you know, I find all of us, I mean, there are at least two of us here, three counting Ed, that are lawyers, and a trained city recorder of the year, I might add. And we have all this talent here and all this training, and still sometimes we find ourselves scratching our heads about open records.
Yep.
So you've made, made a good point, and we have a good program, and we'll try to keep it, keep it working. If you want more financial information about Main Street, any of you,
That's fair.
Please let me know what that is, or let them know, and they'll get it to you.
Absolutely. There should be an audit or something.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing further.
No, no, I just ask if you wanted to say anything about blue hair. And if you don't, I'm not going to say anything about it.
I have nothing to add about that.
Excuse me, Mayor. Dan Fowler had a, oh.
I don't want to say anything to change anybody's minds. Dan Fowler, or you can say, I don't want to say anything to change your minds, but I wanted to just echo what Rob was saying, and really appreciate the discussion. And again, no offense to the requests about public meetings, but to me, it's about an attitude. And, and we've got a great program, and it's working. And I think hold us, hold it accountable fiscally for the money, but don't bind it so tight that it just can't work and flow with the property owners and what they're trying to do down there.
I disagree with that. What are you coming to talk for?
[laughter]
He's hankering for the old man.
All right.
I'll make, I'll make my, I'll make my comments very brief. The Impact was talking about various performance measures that they're looking at. And the Chair of Impact is actually our own County Commission Chair, Charlotte Lehan. And she mentioned that one of the things that, and the many things you're listing, the performance measure, one of the things that hasn't discussed at all was agriculture, and pointing out that even though, even though Impact's the metro area, that it has to be looked at in conjunction with the counties that are there. Agriculture is the single most source of revenue to the county, and she made that point. Impact finally appointed Tony Conkle to be our representative to the metro, the metro policy technical advisory committee.
Congratulations, Tony.
Well, it took, it took, it took a while to do that, but it actually happened. The other thing is there, because of the population growth differences, the district that we were, we're in is going to be modified. The modifications that they've done, actually, the populations, the population in each of the metro districts is, by law, not supposed to vary by more than 5%. Actually, they're not varying by more than 1.6%. So people are doing a very good job of making that assessment. And what's happened, which is actually good, I think, for overall planning, is that all of Happy Valley is with, is coming within our particular metro district, and all of the Stafford Triangle, I'm pleased to say, is coming into our, our district. And so we won't have to share them with Washington County. Anyway, that's all, that's all I have to say on the impact. Any other? Yes, I'd like to spend.
I'm here a week. The last meeting that we had as a city commission was the night before the festival, or the night before I started setting up the festival. And it was a short agenda that went really long. And by the time I was done, I was so frustrated, I rambled a couple words out and I left. And that's kind of how I feel tonight. But I don't have a festival to plan in the morning, and so I'm going to go through the things I wanted to talk about tonight, because I think there's some pretty amazing things. And the first thing I wanted to say was thank you. And thank you to a lot of people that helped make the Pioneer Festival and the Teddy Bear Parade a success again for the 14th year. So I wanted to thank the Parks Department, and especially Larry Potter. We, we actually made him the grand floral of the parade. He didn't know that until he showed up down there. But even, even before the Optimus Club did the, the festival, I did it for Dornbacher Children's Hospital, and Larry's been there that entire time working on, on helping make the park.
Commissioner, his, his grandkids thought he was the coolest guy ever for you guys doing that.
And so it just, it just, it needed to happen. I think that was a, a, a good thing to do, to recognize all the work that he's done to help with the festival. I wanted to thank Public Works, and all their work with blocking off the streets, et cetera, and John Lewis. Want to thank the Police Department for doing the same, leading the parade, kind of dealing with the traffic situation. Wanted to thank Clackamas Fire District One. I have one criticism, though. It was, almost every year that we've done the parade, the one thing that never works for some reason is how the parade enters the park. And it always gets screwed up, and it's always this big logistical nightmare that no one really cares about but me. But just once, I wanted to get it right, and I think we did. But as the parade was going, you know, it, as the parade goes into the park, it's, there's a series of turns, and if it's all not done right, the parade backs up, and it's a big mess. So the parade was going fine, and, and I was kind of, I was driving a golf cart with the parade. And as I got to the underpass, the overpass of 205, the parade was like stopped. And I couldn't figure out why that was happening. And I figured, okay, the parade's not getting into the park. There's something wrong at the front and the park. And so no communication was coming back from the park on radio to find out what was the problem. By the time I didn't get an answer, I was like, I had a person there with a radio next to me, and I just said, forget it. I could get to the park before I get an answer. So I just drove the golf cart until I got to the front of the parade. And the parade hadn't even reached the park, because the police was going so slow, it was all packed. They were really enjoying it. And then, and then the fire, the fire department, who did such a good job, I was like, there was no sirens. I'm like, you have to, you have to, you know, have your sirens going during a parade. It was like, it was very quiet until I was like, come on, you know, be loud.
That's the first complaint I've ever heard of our guys driving too slow.
I know. I know. They were having a good time. I'm sure they were throwing candy out and all kinds of stuff. So, and actually, yeah, well, now that I think about it, my sister has complained for many years of the parade, because they sit near Clackamas Park. And by the time I went gets there, there's no candy. And so I know the Police Department and some other folks along the way had specific candy for my nephews. And maybe they were just looking out for them. Oh. I don't know. Okay. Then Clackamas County Sheriff's Department, Clackamas County Sheriff's Department, I wanted to thank. Lloyd, I wanted to thank you too. Lloyd did, got the word out to Main Street. He also kind of notified businesses of the street closure and all that, so I appreciate that. Just a, a really good. Just a really good event. And for the 14th year, it didn't rain on the parade. Or the skateboard competition, which has been going for seven. I think that's pretty amazing. All right. The other thing, speaking of parades, I wanted to mention, Saturday night is the Starlight Parade downtown Portland. And I don't know if anyone knows this, but Tom Guile has been an announcer for both the Starlight Parade and the Rose Parade for many years on Fourth Street in Portland. And so, I'm actually going to join him Saturday night to be announcing the floats as they come by on Fourth Street. So, I'm really excited about that. And what's, I think what's really great about that is Oregon City, to some degree, tends to forget the amazing connections that we have to not only the city of Portland, but the Rose Festival and the history that these two cities have. For one, the main sponsor of the Starlight Parade has been, for a very long time, Portland General Electric, which was born in Oregon City. The, in fact, the 100th anniversary of the Rose Festival, if you noticed, the lead in the parade was the Oregon City Trolley, because it was really symbolizing that history, not only that the city of Portland was named here, but that PG was created here, and that trolley system, the first, well, first long-distance transmission of electricity in the United States, and the interurban electric rail system, taking people between the two cities. And I don't know that a lot of people noticed that on the 100th year, that that's why the trolley was in the front, but it really was a cool symbol to me to see. The other thing, you know, on all of our trolleys, we have, they have roses on them. And there's a lot of stories about that. The rose on the trolley is also that connection, but also the Josephine rose, and the story of the Josephine rose at the cemetery in Oregon City, which leads me to the next announcement, which is after you go to the parade on Saturday night, cemetery tour that we're doing Sunday at Mount View Cemetery, as part of the History and Roses Tour, as part of the Rose Festival, we're going to do for the first time that I know of. I know there's been cemetery tours in Mount View in the past, but not, I think, this organized and this planned. So, that will be Sunday, 2:00 to 6:00. I was hoping for nice weather, but 85 degrees and wool, I don't know. It's, of course, going to be the warmest. So, go to that, 2:00 to 6:00 on Sunday at the cemetery. I think the price is $8 if you have the History and Roses Passport, which is available at multiple sites, or $10 when you arrive. And I think we're doing tours every 15 minutes? Okay. The last, well, a couple more things. The Ermitinger House, you know, Jim making that list, which I don't know whether to be happy about it or sad, but I think I'll be happy about it. I think that, and I, you know, again, I thank this commission a lot, but we're going to fix that house. And I've never seen this much momentum for it, and I feel for the first time that it's going to happen. And so, some really good things are happening, and I appreciate all your work on that. And also, kind of on the same line, plug for Main Street. If you didn't see the Oregon City News today, or heard the rumor beforehand by email, you need to go to preservationnation.org and vote for the Oregon City Elevator as a place that matters. And there's 100 locations from across the United States that are on that list. You have to register, I think, but you can vote. And so, we need to encourage everyone in Oregon City this month, I think it goes through the end of the month, right, to vote for the Oregon City Elevator. And assuming if we get the most votes, we have the chance to get $25,000 that I would assume then goes to help the elevator, or to help fix it up. So, the inside of the elevator is amazing. Now, we need to start on the outside. So, please encourage everyone that you know, pass it through emails, meetings, to vote for the elevator. And that's it.
Very good.
Boy, if there's some similar candidate site in Manhattan with a city of 7 million people, I think we're going to be outvoted.
Well, we can try. We're going to try.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, a couple of things. First, one of the, from the city manager, what is our work session looking like next Tuesday?
There's the Public Works site. There's a couple of discussion of email for boards and commissions, and the city commission email policy, and one other, which is escaping me at the moment. So, there's four items on there, but the Public Works is the largest.
Yeah. Can I request the commission to add this issue of the visioning and amending the goals for next week? Some of my items, like the email policy, I will yield to that, because I think this is more of a priority for the discussion at the work session.
Are they ready for that? Are they ready for that?
Just a discussion, or do you want us to do something?
No, no, just a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, it's, I mean, we're already talking about looking at those goals, and as long as we're not expecting staff to come up with any reports to us, I don't think it's an issue. Yes, I missed out.
The other thing I wanted to talk about tonight, I wanted to share with the community one idea for relief from $4 a gallon gasoline. Tomorrow, I will be beginning my commuter life on rail. And I did some research a couple of days ago and discovered that the Amtrak train, the Cascade Corridor, runs from Eugene to Portland, and it happens to run through Oregon City during commuter hours. And I found out that they have a monthly pass for unlimited ridership on this route for $58. And I thought that was quite a deal. So, I'm going to encourage us to fill up that train. I noticed that the parking lot at the Amtrak station is pretty empty, so I don't think there's a lot of people doing this. But I want to encourage people to get out of their cars and into rail, so go for it. That's it.
Miss your mom anything?
Nope.
Well, my favorite city recorder has reminded me that I forgot to say something, and thank you. I wanted to report on vacancies on our various boards. The one that's probably most important is the one that's going to be announced that Mr. Conkall referred to, and that's the Historic Review Board. We've got the one vacancy for the Caneva neighborhood position, and I'm glad you're notifying the whole of the neighborhood. We have other ones that aren't critical time-wise, but we needed one vacancy on the Budget Committee, one vacancy on the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, and one vacancy on the Metro Enhancement Committee. Now, those meetings have already been held. We won't see them for nearly a year, but we want to get those out, and want to get some good people on them. Applications are available online, or can be obtained from the city recorder's office. Hearing no other things, comments, or anything? We're being closed.